I think it's close enough. It's six o'clock in beautiful Lee, New Hampshire, and it is beautiful. Leaves are turning. We're going to have a really nice, really nice autumn. This is a joint meeting between the Advisory Budget Committee and the Select Board. I will turn it over to the Advisory Budget Committee, but we do have one speaker, Eric Sawtelle, who wanted to address the board relative to the breakfast.
Thank you. As some of you may know, the originally scheduled farm-style breakfast fundraiser that we, Lee and the Lee Agricultural Commission, the Durham Agricultural Commission, and the Stafford County Farm Bureau put on, this would have been the eighth year that we did it in the spring. We postponed it because of the COVID concerns till the fall, and things got worse instead of better. So it was originally scheduled for this next Sunday, the 17th, and the Grange decided that it would be in the best interest of everybody not to do it inside. This was set up two or three weeks ago now. So we postponed until next March, where our normally scheduled point would be. And then after the fair, a number of people suggested that maybe the Ad Commission could sponsor it and have the same kind of breakfast at Little River Park. So we planned on that, and now it looks like it might rain Saturday into Sunday, so we're asking if we can move it downstairs and park people over at Stevens Field, have people either stay to eat downstairs or do takeout, or if it stops raining before, very late in the morning, put some tables up either out on Stevens Field or on the other side of Monument over there so people can eat outside. It's supposed to be a nice day after it rains. So I'm asking if the board would approve of us moving the breakfast to downstairs on the 17th.
So we can make that a motion, but I don't think we have to make that a motion. If we could just get consensus, vote.
Is the policy that you have to vote on somebody using the facilities downstairs or not?
I don't think for this we could, but we can.
It's still sponsored by the Ad Commission, right? So they're an entity of the town. So it's not an insurance thing. I sent out a message to the police and fire chief. The police chief was okay with it. I haven't heard back from the fire chief. I don't know.
I haven't heard from the fire chief. Yeah. Well, just to give you some idea of how logistically how we would do it, we will use part of the kitchen downstairs for doing some of the pancakes, maybe. Bring the ER catering trailer up and do most of the cooking in that or around that. And then serve downstairs. The servers will be masked. People can either stay, use all takeout containers. People can either stay and eat or, as I said, do takeout or go outside. So it'll only be really the serving and some people eating downstairs. Parking-wise, and Peter might want to speak about this a little bit, but I'm talking with Steve and the highway guys and the chiefs. If we block off from the road right there over to the building so people can't drive around the building, Scott said he would turn all the fire trucks around so they could go out that way. And the only thing that would be down here would be people coming in, coming out of the door downstairs and maybe wandering over to Stevens Field that way. So there wouldn't be any traffic in the lot or in the front here. Everybody would park at Stevens Field, go in and out over there. So it'll keep the facility here clear.
So let's try for a consensus vote. Selectman Bugbee.
But the fire chief is okay with it? Okay, I'm fine with both chiefs.
Select person Casper?
Yes, that sounds great.
Selectman Brown, yes. Motion passes. That's not a motion, no, it's a consensus.
Passes.
Thank you. If anybody wants to help, let me know. We're going to need it.
They're going to need our head examined. They say we'll need our head examined.
Okay, at this time, I will move the meeting over to the ABC Chairman, Mr. Murdock.
Your view, is cemetery here?
Yep, standing right here.
Oh, you're doing it. I was looking for Jeff. I was like, okay, you're doing it.
I'm the guy that drew the short straw.
You're up. Pete.
I'm going to say our budget went up. We took it up about $800. Most of it is due to the costs of the things we buy. We can go down line by line or however you'd like to go through it. Maintenance and repair, we've taken from 2,100 to 25, mainly due to the cost of fertilizer and some of the crop control stuff that we use. It's taken us three years to get these things under control, and we finally got cemeteries that look like cemeteries and not brown sand lots. We're going to try to keep it that way. But we bought a pallet of fertilizer about two years ago, and it's just about time gone. So now it's time to probably buy another lot with a highway like we did the last time and keep on going. The other big expense that we do have, we buy somewhere in the vicinity of two groves of flags for Memorial Day and the medallions. We've got five or six medallions now that have been damaged over time. And I think the last one she said she bought were almost 50 bucks a medallion. So that's running into some money, so we upped that to 900 for this year. Improvements, we're going to keep at 1,500. The one thing we do need to buy is probably going to be the trash cans, the fiberglass trash cans. We've got to the point now where the sun has pretty well dried them out, and they're cracking, so everything's filling with water. It's getting to be a mess, so they're going to have to get replaced at some point in the near future. The one thing we are going to have to kind of watch ourselves, we've got three trees we've already taken out, and one at Flag Hill and two over here at Lee Hill. We've got two more we've got on our watch list. I'm not sure. We're hoping from talking with John Roy that we've got another couple of years before we have to take them out. But if it's like the one at Flag Hill and decides to fall, it's coming out just as soon as we can get it out of there. And being in around the stones and stuff, we were lucky at Flag Hill, we only broke one stone. When that big branch came down, why it didn't take out a whole bunch more, I don't know. But we had a guy, a gentleman come in with his crane, and within a couple or three hours, they had the whole tree taken out, cleaned up. And like I say, the guy was great. And like I say, the other two, we can't get the crane into the Lee Hill because of the road is so narrow and stuff, so that's all basically handwork from a bucket. If we can't get that, then we climb it. And that's just something we're going to have to watch. Right now, the fences are all in good shape on the two public cemeteries, but the one down at Old Parish down on Garrity Road, it wouldn't take but one of those little pine trees to come flying down on it, and we'd be out of fence. So we're kind of leaving some of that within the maintenance budget for that. The other thing we've got is two, right now we have two old stones with the bases, the foundations under the bases are just plain rotted away and broken up. So we're getting them replaced this year, and we looked at a couple or three more, one at Old Parish and one at Lee Hill, two at Lee Hill, excuse me, that I'm afraid we'll probably have to do the same thing. I mean, the one we looked at the other day, we rolled a stone off, the headstone itself had fallen off, the pegs had rotted off, fell off. So we picked it up and rolled the base out of the way, and all it was was a pile of stones with a little cement stuck around it. So I've got the gentleman that does a lot of our foundations and stuff coming in, he's going to put a regular foundation under it like we have for all of our new stones and just take the worry right out of it that way. That's basically where we're at with the cemetery.
I have two questions.
Fire away.
One, do we ever have any issues with vandalism in the cemetery?
We've had some, but usually it's, well, every so often we'll find a stone knocked over, something like that. I think it's been two years ago, we went in the spring down at Old Parish, and we found one of our stones broken in a couple of places, and yet there was nothing visible around it to show us that anything had hit it. So how it got broke, we have no clue. But every so often you'll find beer bottles or you'll find stuff in there, like somebody's had a bit of a potty in an area, but other than that, it's nothing been major.
My last question is, and I think we talked just a little bit about this, is there's a bush, I shouldn't say that, there's a movement to kind of do away with the traditional cemeteries and go to trees and forests where they're actually setting the ashes in with the planting of a tree, and that becomes the memorial. I assume they have some kind of plaque on it. I don't know if and when we ever run out of space, but has there been any consideration? Any talk, just any talk about it at all?
We've talked about it some. I won't say it's been a whole lot. The one thing that has come up is what they call a green burial, where they basically dig a hole, put the body in it, and cover it over again. And the problem we see there is within the next couple of five, two to five years, all that ground is going to basically rot, the body's going to rot away, the ground's going to fall away. We're going to have to go back, fill things in and stuff like that. So we're going to stay with, if you want a green burial, you will have to buy a vault, eliminate the problem right from the get-go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Carrie touched on my question I was going to ask. In terms of the two public cemeteries, where are we at capacity, Peter?
Basically, Old Parish is full, and I'm going to guess we're somewhere between 60 and 70% at Lee Hill. Now, if we go and make, there's one section that has no graves at all in it, and we're talking about making that strictly a cremation area. If we do that, and half of that next rollover, we can probably say we're at 50%. We're working on that. We have not gone forward to that plan yet.
Okay. So about how many years do you think before it's like getting close to the fall?
I won't be here.
I'm just thinking, one of the things that we'll meet tomorrow night about is, it talks about planning for the future, and if we have to find another place for those particular activities to occur, it'd be nice to know sooner than later. Maybe that, is that something that I could ask you and the other cemetery trustees to, based on past usage or filling?
Like how long?
Yeah. Not that I want people to die and fill up the place, but, you know, if you guys can kind of gauge in terms of how many spaces you've been using?
Well, that's been, I'd say, I've been on about three years now. The first year, we never sold a grave. COVID came, we sold two or three, and I think we sold 15 in the last six to eight months. Before that, I think we averaged, from what I can remember Randy telling me, a couple or three graves a year, depending, if you buy a full grave, you can put four cremations in a full grave or one full body, and that's going to be where the numbers come in. If you fill them all up full of full bodies, and you're not going to get too many in, but if you, and a lot of people are going with the cremations, so you've got the room for quite some time to still go ahead.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, we'll be good. Carrie, thank you very much.
Questions, don't be afraid to ask.
Tell a lot of compliments about the cemetery. A lot of people just thank you.
Okay, I will.
Oh, you're good.
I was just complimenting. Great work that's been done.
I will run over to you, Mr. Murdock. No, thank you. So the REC Commission, Larry.
All right, who set this schedule? Death followed by recreation?
You wanted to lead, right?
What about composting? That's a new fad on the West Coast. You've got to go out every couple nights, turn the barrel.
Whatever. We can throw it in the big pile, now the dump would be all.
Okay, recreation. We do recreate once in a while. Okay. 2021, interesting season. We've been able to do some of our programs. We weren't able to do the Easter egg hunt or the fishing derby. Hopefully, we can do that in 2022. It's definitely on the agenda. The Model Rocket Day, once again, was a big success. We had about 30 kids come out for that, and unfortunately, we didn't build the rockets there this year. We had the kids take them home and build them and then come to the park. Next year, we definitely want to try to get the building back into the schedule. The Music in the Park program, the attendance wasn't all that good, and we are now looking at revamping that program and possibly turning it into a once-a-month program, a family night on a Thursday night, and having multiple activities such as music and having food available, having some games for the kids, you know, just something a little bit different each month throughout the summer and just do it one day a month. See if we can't get better attendance for that. But it was, we feel that the amount of money that's being spent on that program, even though it's a great idea and the musicians have been great, the problem is the cost is too high for the number of people being served. So we're going to work on that.
Is that just as a result of like this last year with people not wanting to go out? Or like before?
People are wanting to go out. I mean, we're seeing a lot of activity in the parks. Yeah, I think that just people are not.
To congregate, I'm just wondering, was it, I mean, I went to a couple of them, but that was last.
Well, just take a look at what happened at the fair. We had a fantastic turnout for that.
That's true, yeah.
So I don't think that that's the issue. I think it's just people are, you know, there are people that have time to do that and want to come out for it, but I think that a lot of the people in town, just, it doesn't appeal to them that much. It's not that important to them.
Right.
To come out and support that program. So that's why we think if we condense it, you know, put the money to better use just one night a month, and just have multiple activities and try to draw more people under the one date. And it's less commitment for people, too.
Yeah.
So we're going to work that out this winter and hopefully institute it in the spring or summer for the summer of next year. We're still trying to get this archery program up. Our biggest problem there is trying to get an instructor. We haven't had much luck with that, but we're not going to give up on it. We want to also fund the Halloween bash for 2022. We had that in the past, and we had a following for that. It worked out pretty good, so we want to come back into that in 2022. We've tried to keep the budget relatively the same, and what I, what we did do, what we did vote to do, as you can see by what was submitted, we want to hire a part-time recreation director. We're at that point where I think it's important for this town to have a part-time recreation director. Basically, the duties would be to help develop the programs, institute programs. I think we could do a lot more with somebody that's just focused in on that. The other thing is, too, I think that it's time for the town to take control of the, taking control of the scheduling of the parks and the facilities that we have, rather than leave it to outside organizations. So what we did was, we took away the budget request for ORYA, and we want to turn that into a recreation director. We do have somebody in mind for that. She is very well qualified to do this, and she has offered to do it. We need to have some more discussions with her. But I think that money could be better utilized in taking control of our facilities, and I think it's time to do that. And part and parcel to that, obviously, for the Select Board, is to reinstate the REC Commission with the authorities under RSA 35. I think that's going to be very important so that we can act as a commission rather than just a programs director. So that's a discussion I would like to have with the Select Board in the very near future, and the REC Commission is in agreement with that. So our budget, basically, the only thing we really added was miscellaneous new programs for $1,500, and we're looking to have that money available to develop some new programs. Hopefully, we can get a part-time REC director into this, into the Recreation Commission so that we can, so that we can better develop that. The last item has to do with a discussion we've been having. Our CIP shows that we've put money away to refurbish the tennis court. We've had this discussion, the Select Board's had this discussion with us in the past, and basically, it's my understanding that if the tennis court is to be rebuilt or refurbished, that the Select Board would like to see that over at Little River Park. We've had some pretty detailed discussion with that, and really, there's no room at Little River Park to put in a tennis court. We're, we just don't have the room to do it. The sheep field out in back is not conducive for that. It's being used for other things, obviously, the multi-use field, can't do it there. There's not enough room on the basketball court to do that, and there's just not enough property between the pavilion in that area to put in a tennis court. I know that there had been some discussion, some people have brought up, well, let's cut some trees down and put a tennis court back behind the electrical shed. I don't think that that's viable, but that's consideration. What we've discussed is that we do have money in the CIP for the tennis court renovation, and there are three scenarios that we've been looking at. One, obviously, is to redo the tennis court, which is going to be about $35,000 to do that, to put in a regulation tennis court. We've been discussing that it might be best to put that tennis court, to refurbish the one that we have. It's getting a lot of use. I mean, we have people using it for yoga and other things. It's not being used for tennis really because it's not regulation size, it's not in good condition, there's roots pulling up the blacktop and so on. I talked to Steve Bullock about it, and we actually did close down the tennis court because it was quite dangerous because when it gets damp, it gets very slippery. Another use for the tennis court last winter was the ice skating rink, which was fantastically, I mean, it was a fantastic program. Having a tennis court there and having an ice skating rink there brings an ambiance to the town because it's right on the main road there, and people can see that. And it lends itself to that ambiance of a small town, small community. And if we have skating in the evening, we do have lighting there available. I think that with a new tennis court surface and so on, the ice skating rink had problems because it's sloped, so the water and everything in there, they had issues with that. So having a nice flat level surface to put the ice skating rink on would be another good use for that. We also feel people have been using the pickleball court, which is extremely popular, have been using the pickleball court for tennis from time to time. People have also asked for more pickleball courts. Well, we don't really have room for that at Little River Park either. A tennis court could be multipurpose, pickleball and tennis. So that's one consideration, because it was earmarked from the CIP to rebuild that tennis court in 2022. The money's there. That's one suggestion that the Select Board should consider, is rebuilding that court there. It can be done for probably about $35,000. Steve Bullock says it can do a lot of the work there in getting that leveled out and getting rid of a couple of the white pines that are there that are causing the problems and so on. The other thing is, too, the school also uses that court, so I think it would be money well spent. The next item, the next scenario that came up was to, was to build a food court at Little River Park. That, we had discussions about that. That in itself presents some issues. If it's put in along the length of the pickleball court where it is now, because some people say, well, we need a wind block there, a lot of us feel that it's just going to be ugly. You're going to have problems with graffiti and other things going on there. That's just one other, one other scenario. The third scenario that we looked at was putting in a cement slab in the pavilion, which was under the original plans for the pavilion was to have a cement slab in there, but we didn't have money to do that because the higher cost of the pavilion, it was more than what was originally earmarked for that. The dirt floor does create a problem. There's a lot of dust when the wind blows, so people are using it for parties and so on, or if we use it for venues such as the Music in the Park, it creates a problem there. Again, it has its pluses and minuses to doing that. So taking the money that we already have and utilizing that, which is the best way to utilize it, is something that I think the Select Board should look at very closely. The REC Commission has looking at all, has looked at all three. We had thought that maybe putting in the cement slab might be the way to go, but I think further discussion is necessary, and it might very well be that the tennis court is the best way to go, the biggest bang for the buck. So that's why I put that in there. I don't think that we would have to, have to have any additional funding for that, but it would take a warrant article to release that money to do that. But I would like the Select Board to consider those three scenarios. Other than that, that's, all the other, all the other dollar amounts are what we put in for last year. The one thing that we didn't have in there last year was Model Rocket Day because I had a lot of supplies left over. We're putting that back in because we want to stockpile some supplies. As you know, we do have problems getting things nowadays, and one of the things we're probably going to have are some of these supplies that have to come from overseas. So we want to make sure we have enough, enough for our different programs.
We didn't have the fishing derby either this year.
We didn't have the fishing derby, and I will be talking to Randy and Michelle Stevens to see how they feel about having it for next year. But that would be strictly their choice since it's on their property. Easter egg hunt shouldn't be an issue unless you have another major crisis. Who knows?
I don't know, the shortage of chickens.
Of course, we might not have any candy, we could have candy stores, I don't know, but who knows?
Larry, is there enough land over where the tennis court is currently to expand that to a regulation-sized?
Yes, that, if we did, our discussion did revolve around the fact of making it regulation-sized, which I think would.
Love taking out a bunch of trees.
It just, I think there's just a couple of white pines there. I don't think there's anything major there. There's a couple that are creating root structure underneath the blacktop, but I don't think that there's anything major that would have to, have to come out.
My other question was, the ten grand for the Recreation Director, how many hours does that translate into?
Well, that's something we have to flesh out a little bit more. Like I said, we do have somebody that is interested in that position and part-time. She definitely has the capability and experience to do that. She knows what it's going to take to do it.
Would they, would that person take over the scheduling that ORYA does now, that it really used to be?
Yes. And the town, and along with that, we basically envision that the town would take over all maintenance of the fields, which basically, we're just transferring dollars now to ORYA to do that, and the town does most of the maintenance anyway on the fields as far as grass cutting and so on. It's just a matter of fertilizing and seeding and things like that, which landscaping company does anyway, so it's just a dollar transfer from one bank account to another to do that. And part of that, too, is that we have a revolving account, which So, and part of that too, is that we have a revolving account, which we, which right now has, revolving account has about, almost $9,000 in it. And those, that money comes from the rental of the fields primarily. And we're probably, we're probably looking at, in my personal opinion, is that revolving account money, what we get for rental on the field should go towards maintenance of the fields. But it should, it should level the playing field, so to speak, with regard to scheduling, maintenance, and the fact that the town, you know, we just feel that the town, it's time for the town to take control of our properties.
Your suggestion was to take the funding that normally goes to ORYA, utilize that, that way it's not, you're not asking for more money, you're asking to change.
The only additional money that we're asking for is the $1,500 for the miscellaneous new programs, and then we'll put them back into $500 for the Monro Rocket Day. So we want to try to keep, our budget is running as possible, so that we're not adding more to the taxes.
Larry, the Recreation Director, is that what you, the title you were talking about?
Yes.
Is that a paid position?
Yes.
Roughly, how much?
Well, we're putting in the $10,000.
Thank you.
You're all good?
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Conservationation Commission?
Hi, Don.
I'm bringing up the, I think that, almost.
Don Jane.
Chair.
I'm Sugarman.
Charles Compton.
So, hi, everybody. Hopefully, you all have the copies of what I sent, the town didn't make extra copies in case that didn't happen. We were a very busy, very active Conservation Commission, and everything about this past year, year and a half, has made it that much busier. We had talked to you last year about how the use of town property has really increased with people being out and about on trails and so on, and that's the reason for forming a Trails Committee early this year. But we're seeing that wear and tear on town property. So you can see in our budget requests that we do an awful lot of work, and you'll see every week, the Town Cryer has something in it about our activities. We're on Facebook. The number of engagements that we have with people through social media is important to us. We also have had an Emerald Ash Board workshop early in spring, and we do have that invasive bug in our town, unfortunately, and we're, have a special project going on behind the safety complex right now, learning more about it. And we sponsor kids' conservation camp every year, although it had been canceled for reasons of the pandemic. So our education, we do an awful lot for almost next to nothing. And then, the bulk of what we do is working on the stewardship of our properties. So if you ever venture a look into some of the other surrounding towns Conservation Commission websites on the town site, you'll see that the number of conservation properties that we're working with is exponentially larger than a lot of the others. So there's, you know, like 27 that are private, there's five major town properties that we're working with. The Trails Committee has focused on the town forest and Maude Jones and Little River Park for making trail improvements and suggestions. So you'll see, this request is largely based out of that feet-on-the-ground and doing inventories and reworking trails and coming up with what our needs are. And I'll pass around two little things from, of work last week, some of the town forest trail getting relocated. But what we're finding is that foot bridges are falling apart, because they're rotting and we've had accidents happen. So they prioritize what needs to be fixed, and then we had one more break that wasn't even on this, you know, what we thought for next year. So we are planning for the balance of some funding this year, getting after those trail and bridges, and then the next year, doing the next set of bridges, so that we can get to where we've replaced them all in a two- or three-year period of time before more accidents happen. So large bulk of our request is about trail maintenance, the information kiosks that would go at new places to inform people about where the trails are and what the rules are, and hours of operation, if that's necessary. We also do work with invasive species control, so that bittersweet bugs, you know, things that are devastating some of our town property can be kept in check. And then we have costs associated with doing this stewardship work, such as signage that's needed. Occasionally, we have to do a new survey if there's a line in question or a neighboring property where they aren't exactly sure where town line ends and their property begins, we can resolve it with a quick survey that we pay for. And with all of this use, we'd like to get some maps, especially since we rerouted some trails, and have maps, not that we would print, but that we would have made to be digitally correct and then available online for people using it on their phone or services like that. And then lastly, we have costs associated with who we're memberships of and the partners that we have. So that is our, some total of our request, which is more than last year, but then again, our needs are more than we had identified last year, and we are actively out there working on those. So I'll take any questions, and Deb can help too with the trails.
With the trails, are you using volunteers to do the repairs, or are you hiring more?
No, it's all volunteers.
So do you advertise on the website?
So I have a list, an email list of volunteers that have, that have expressed interest in helping out. I have 14 people on the Trails Committee, which is great. And then I have a list of people who are volunteering, who want to volunteer on the trails, Trail Day. I also put it on the Lee Facebook page, on the Conservation Facebook page, and E-Cry or some other places, but it's all volunteers. And there's a work day on the 23rd.
Yeah.
Can we have Deb talk about Trails Committee, what they've done so far?
Oh, yeah.
One of the things, I'll just make, I'll pontificate just a little bit.
Yeah.
I serve as their rep at the moment, and one of the things that kind of goes a little bit unnoticed, they do an awful lot of work for the town, and if you ever attend any of their meetings, you can see how much stuff they do. And if I could ask Deb to talk about the things that you've done on the Trails Committee, and that, I think that would be great, but they're kind of like unsung heroes. They do all those easement monitorings, and they've put in an awful lot of time, so.
Well, the Trails Committee doesn't do the easement monitoring, the Conservation Commission does that, but Don can talk about that. So we basically are looking at the three areas, Maude Jones, Little River Park, and the town forest. And what we did was, I divided up the 14 people that are on the committee into three groups, and each group is in charge of one area. And then one person kind of, in each area, rose to the, to the top and wanted to be the head. So now I have heads of all those three committees, which, which makes it really, really nice. So we basically looked at all the areas, looked at the trails, kind of did a needs analysis of the areas, and found that the biggest thing was the trail conditions. And each area was different. The most challenging one has been the town forest, because there were so many trails and so many marks on the trees, and nobody knew where we were going, and people would get lost. And we talked to a lot of people and asked them, you know, what their feelings about the trail were. And some people said, oh, we've been hiking this for 35 years, and we love it. And other people would say, I can never know where I am on this trail. There's no facts, there's no signage on the trails. So that's what we attacked first on every single trail area. And your motto is? Oh, have fun and get things done. No, 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 that was, you're not trying to speak safe and... Oh, 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 yeah, safe, accessible, and, I forget. Yeah, so we did a lot of trail maintenance. In Little River Park, we actually did a lot of erosion control stuff, because people are walking up and down on the Ridge Trail. So we put up signs, we did all sorts of erosion control. We also wrote a grant to Little River, or Napre River Advisory Committee, and got a grant to put up a kiosk at Little River Park, which is there. And the panel will be there tomorrow. We are so excited about that. With artwork on it from Catherine Fisher. Yeah, it's beautiful. And we also just got permitted by Department of Environmental Services to put in two bridges down on the flood plain. So we're cooking right along. And we just got permitted also to do the bridges in Little, in town forest. Yeah. And the permitting processes were easy, and it wasn't cheap. We used all of her grant money just getting permission from DES to do the Little River Park one. So building the bridges will be on our guy, but we want to get that done and get after it before spring rolls around. One of the other things I mentioned about maps, since we're currently, budget, we're going to be spending about $1,600, that the town forest has multiple different parcels, because the easements came in at different times. But when we do monitoring or when we're doing any planning, we have survey maps of each parcel, and they're all at different scales. So you can't even put them next to each other in order to see the whole big thing as it is. So we have a survey firm right now that we're about to approve the final product on, so that we at least, you know, have a map for planning purposes that's to the same scale and still has all of the survey lines and boundaries for us to use. But it didn't come cheap, and just doing that consolidation was $1,600. But those are the kinds of things that we run into that are must-have tools, but they're not free. So I hope you think that we have a reasonable request, and we are on track to be appreciated what we got last year, and we'll be spending that down. You know, by the time June 30th comes around, we'll have used up all that was allotted for this current fiscal year, and have needs that, we know what they are, and they're lined up in the queue for, for the coming years, because people are using our lands. And it's a good thing that it's there and available, but it takes its wear and tear.
So I have a request.
Yes.
Also, Larry, of all the committees, and actually, we have a 10-year plan, it's a master plan. And that plan, which covers 2016 to 2026, has a very good section in there about what they anticipate for your committee. And I can tell you right now, you're dead on, but I would really like, and same thing, same thing, hello Larry, from the Recreation Committee, but I would really appreciate you referencing back to the master plan where you are and how you feel about it, because it's very important to us to take the temperature of the master plan periodically, and it's something we have not really done, is to measure how we're doing against the master plan. So I just wanted to mention that. I just went through all the items, and I can tell you, you're doing very, very well, but I would really like you to look at and say, well, yeah, we didn't do this, why didn't we do that, what stopped this, or whatever, so.
Great point, we'd be glad to do that, certainly, certainly want to.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And I, just, just for a little, Scott was very kind.
And that's for all the committees. All the committees are pretty much mentioned in the, in the 10-year plan.
He mentioned time. Trails Committee's done tremendous amount of work, the education things that happened and all the write-ups that Catherine and Amanda do, but the monitoring of the easements that we have is every Wednesday morning. We started in April and we're not done yet. So every Wednesday, for two to three hours, we are slogging through, usually taking a V-line on a compass of the actual crocrid lines through the, through the bushes and whatever. So we have two more to go when we're done for the season.
There's also a survey that was done several years ago, that you might want to just look at, as to how the town folk of Lee wanted to use the various recreation and Conservation, et cetera, et cetera, so.
I, my mind is a little blank on it. I feel like I almost did that about a month ago, and I've already forgotten, but we'll definitely take a look at the master plan, see how we're measuring up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Ken, probably Dawn, can you speak to it? Because I think you've, I don't think you've forgotten yet, because you're very integral in terms of, talked about the replacement of the deck, not the deck.
Oh, the bog.
At the bottom, the log platform.
Oh, yeah, that was one of her accomplishments this year, and it actually probably slid into this fiscal year's purchases, because of the way that bill came in. But the bog platform had been falling apart, and we were able to, we did a permit on that, but it was a replacement, so that was a permit by notification. But we went with a Tommy Dock, and it's the galvanized pipes that go in, and then the aluminum platform. So if you haven't been back to the bog to take a look, it's, it's a unique natural resource feature that's on the state historic list, or heritage list, because of its uniqueness. And it's very accessible, and now very safe.
Yeah, I went down there and watched them one day putting it in. They were up to their knees in mud.
Yeah.
And, and working very hard at trying to put that dock in. So they did a great job.
Yeah, we had the benefit of Randy Stevens coming back from retirement to help us out to get that in. So, yeah, it's definitely worth the trip back there to take, it's not very far to get to.
No, it's good.
Yeah, the other thing that happened this summer was, we had a group of middle school students from the REACH Program, Department of Recreation in Durham, and they built two benches. So you'll see one of the benches over by the, by the bog, and it's beautiful. We sat in there a couple days ago, and you can look out over the bog, and the trees are all turning. And the other one is down by the old mill, so. Which, the old mill, we were talking with Trails Group Two about how we should partner with Heritage and some other groups in town, because why, why are these lots called, who owned these parcels or farms at one point in time? What was that mill used for? So as we're getting the trails and the maps and what to see along the way, hopefully we can partner with Heritage Commission on some of that history.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Very much, ladies. Hi. Is Meals on Wheels here?
Yep.
Great.
Hi, I'm Jamie Shagnon, I'm from the Meals on Wheels program. First off, of course, I want to thank you guys for supporting us in the past, and appreciate your consideration again. Last year, we served 18 people in the town of Lee, sorry, reading glasses necessary now, 2,382 meals, and did 144 safety checks. One of the things that, of course, everybody's got lots of challenges, one of our biggest challenges right now is food costs going through the roof. Right now, I've been told that at the end of this, well, I actually supposed to start beginning this month, but now it's going to the end of the month, I got a month reprieve, my food cost is going up by 60 cents, and that's going to be a hard hit for us. So, you know, we've been trying very hard to weather the storm like everybody else. We have been diligent in the sense of, like, clients who really have no options, we've been making sure they have additional food on hand in case we ever had a shutdown, which we only had one, out of one location at one point, where we had an exposure and had to close for a week, and till we were sure everybody was safe and clean, so we don't, you know, cross-contaminate, so to speak. But we try to make sure that they're all prepared and have backup, so if something goes awry. We do serve, we have a system in place, so when someone has COVID and we're going to them, we have like a distance, non-contact, as they say in the thing, set up in place to, so we're still serving them, we don't turn them away because they have COVID. And then we're also kind of monitoring them a little bit more, like we do anyways, to see, you know, like, if they can't come to the door, do we need to call there anyone we can, whether it's family, doctors, whatever, to see that they check on them, because maybe they're getting worse. Which is part of our practice anyways, it's just COVID makes it a little more extreme. The, one thing I've been trying to make sure people understand, because I've presented this for many years, and it's probably the only positive thing I can come up with about the pandemic, is I think now, when I talk about the socialized isolation of people, and that's part of what we're about, I think people get it better now than they ever did before. Not a great thing that we all can relate so well, but I think we now understand, a lot of these seniors, like in my last survey, it was 52 or 54%, I'm going back a little bit right now, said that my driver's the only person I see during the week. So that's, that says a lot for their, you know, situations. Other than that, I'm open to answer any questions you guys might have, if you want more details. I know you got a long, busy night, so I'll try to keep it to what you need to know from me.
I think the only comment I'd like to make is, I'm very, very familiar with Meals on Wheels from when I was a little kid.
I assume it's a deliberate.
Have you run into the situation, are you aware that in many cases, the recipient has a pet that is almost like a child to that recipient, and he shares the meal with... And he shares the meal with, and I was, I was wondering if there's not a way of possibly coming up with a program that might put a handful of kibbles in one of the, one of the spaces for these people because their food, in some cases, is going to their pets, whom they love like a child.
Yep. Well, first of all, you are not wrong. In the past, and it hasn't happened lately, we used to have connections with some other, like the ASPCA, and when they got extra food, they would donate it to us. That hasn't happened for a while and I have to admit, I've been so busy, I haven't tried to pursue it further. We do, at least at Christmas time, do a Santa for Senior program where we look at individuals that, again, would be alone, have no holiday, no family contact. And our drivers make a list of the essentials they might need. Sometimes it includes dog food and pet food. And then we go out and look for people to sponsor that and purchase those gifts.
Well, I think that, that the program could work pretty easily. I think most people don't realize there's a, just this past weekend, we were going to take three fifty-pound bags of dog food back to the ASPCA. The ASPCA won't take food back if the bag's been opened.
Oh.
So, so we ended up just bringing it back and it disappeared. So, you know, I really think a program could be put together where people would donate bags of food. I know we would.
I definitely know anytime I've asked, people have been kind. Like I said, I haven't been as proactive and more worried about the individual directly, but that's a very valid point. I think what I would like to share with anybody here is, you know, as well as anyone you want to share with, if you have something you're wondering about whether you could donate, always call us.
Yep.
The worst thing we're gonna say is, no, the rules don't allow us to, to pass that along. But I do try to do as much as I can, whether it's, like, we, for example, this is not dog food, but Coffee News has been kind to us and gives us some Coffee News. We pass those out to the homebound. And, and they really enjoy that. They enjoy the little stories of the, you gain in there trying to find their being. You know, so we've done that before when we have surplus food, even if people brought in, even if we can't find a client, we have associations that have food pantries in senior centers and stuff like that that we can pass along. So never hesitate to reach out to us.
Well, I was thinking if you could contact the ASPCA, they might say, okay, we'll take the open bag and give it to you.
Well, that's it. I definitely could do that again. And it's been a while and I should because that used to happen. So it's just, again, it fell somewhere through the cracks and I haven't bothered to look at it and I apologize for that.
Peace.
No, it's a good point because you are right. They're, they will feed their babies over themselves and that's, you know, that's not a mistaken opinion. Any other questions?
Melissa?
You said eighteen people in Lee this year.
Yes.
Is that normal here or is that a?
That's been consistent for about two to three years now. We haven't had any huge increase, although what we've been seeing is more need among the people, not necessarily volume of people. And on average, we're feeding about ten of those people a day.
Okay. Yeah, in the split on that, are all of them subsidized or are they partially subsidized or totally subsidized?
Okay, that's a really good question, too. What happens with the Meals on Wheels program is we do get a contract with the state that pays roughly about seventy percent of the cost of the meal. We're required to find a local match for the other thirty in order to get the seventy percent. In addition to that, there is people that are above the contract because that's a certain amount that we have to, to raise all the money. And I did put that down so I could tell you and could just, so last year, the meals we served for you guys, one thousand seven hundred and fifty were paid at the seventy percent rate and six hundred and thirty-two we had to fundraise completely for. Our average cost for meals right now are running about eight dollars and twenty to twenty-five cents per meal. That includes the labor as well as the food and everything.
And one thing I'll just ask you and everyone else that's here, if there's something that our town could do to make it easier fundraising or ways that we could be more supportive, other things we can do to reach out, just I'd love to hear those as well, not just the requests.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. One of the things that I'm not doing this year, though, remember that next year, we usually do a big annual mailing. We're doing a small one because I can't get, it was ten thousand pieces and I had like a hundred people that would get together and put it together and, and nobody wants to do that yet. Not yet to see that. But I'll remember that for that future once. Anything else I can answer?
Melissa?
We're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you have any other follow-up questions, please reach out. All right? Thank you.
Strafford County Community Action?
Two copies of this, I did bring extra.
Okay.
There's the interim report and then the actual, sorry, and then the requests that we had sent in. I'm Ms. Davis Parker and I'm the CEO of Community Action and this is Melissa Spill. She's our chief advancement officer. I'm showing her, she's, she's our new advancement officer and she's from North Carolina. So I'm like, you'll be excited to come to a town budget meeting. But I'm actually thrilled to be here. In the past, we've been on Zoom. It's great to see people in person, thanks for having us. People know what Community Action does. We do a lot of the leading anti-poverty work in the agency, but in the area. But I wanted to really point out some things that are really of a highlight versus what had happened in the past. You've been very generous. The funding that we get is part of our fifty-four thousand dollar municipal line budget. We use that to leverage the one point two million we have to raise every year. So just like Meals on Wheels said, there's a match that we have. So people often ask us, what difference does this make? It makes a huge difference because it has support and it goes to our overall fundraising. The biggest impact you will see this year is what's under homeless prevention, security deposit, rapid rehousing prevention, people familiar with the new Hampshire Emergency Rental Assistance Program to help people from being evicted. We had a homeowners program with the first part of it. There's over three hundred thousand dollars that we have put in just to the town alone for rental and eviction prevention. That our fuel is about forty-two thousand dollars and that we anticipate that this will continue. This is an ongoing eighteen-month program that people can be eligible for. And why that's so important, so the question was, is what can you do to help, is please refer people to this rental assistance program. Once you have an eviction on your record, no matter what it's from, we've had a client who was evicted because their, their landlord sold the building, but in order to have them move out, they had an eviction. And so property management companies see it as an eviction. And so therefore, we have to go do an appeal and all these things. So what we're doing is everything we can to prevent eviction. And a lot of our partners talk about what happens when you get an eviction on your, on your record and how you can't get housed after that at a less than one percent vacancy rate. So this is what we're doing right now. And that's where you really see, because people look and say, wait a minute, how do we have fifty-four households that are homeless? It's homeless prevention. It's what it's classified as. And then weatherization. We only had one house that was weatherized in the past. We've had several. Again, that's been a huge, we're expecting to have additional money coming through with our weatherization program in January and increasing, which will increase the limits of who's available to get that assistance. And keeping people in their homes and warm is really important to us because then it keeps them in town, paying taxes and going to school and all those things. So those are the, the highlights that we have. Oh, and I would say one more thing, too. The look at that, we have kinship care and home visiting. The kinship is families that are like raising grandparents, raising grandchildren or other family. And we're seeing a huge increase in that as well that's coming across. So those are the high, I guess, highlights of what we've been providing specifically for your town. And they also include this year, everyone always asks, where do we fall into the continuum of all the services? So you can see where you are exactly. You're about one point five percent of my total population served.
So you have a program to help the seniors that are raising their grandkids then?
Yes. Yep, that's our kinship care program and our family resource center. And we have, yes, booming. It really is.
Homeless people. Homeless people that come into town in a car with two children and it's raining and they need to know where can they get help? How, how, how can we, how do we do that? How do, how do they have somewhat easy time finding out where they can go to get help?
Right. So usually your human services, your welfare director will make a referral over to us. If they're a family, I gotta tell you, we boot them over to Tracy in the corner, homeless center, but if it's an emergency, it's a Friday and we're getting a phone call, we're gonna look to house them for the weekend until we can get them into our proper provider. We gauge the situation, where they come from. You have a really great point of how to connect people to services. You don't need it until you need it. And so one of the things Melissa actually will be working on is sending out to all our elected officials in welfare, how to refer people, what their websites are and how to get connected in, in, in really being educated about our program. So if they're coming into town on a Friday and they're showing up at your doorstep, you gotta call Community Action or I would even say sometimes 211. You may get a quicker thing with 211 for emergency services to get them connected in. If they're from your town, we're gonna want to keep the kids in the town. We're gonna want to work with your homeless liaison and your schools.
What's up signage?
Signage?
Signage, yeah. Well, I mean, what, what, what can we do to, to, there's some entrances to the town, there's some exits from the town, et cetera. What could we do to tell people, hey, you know, are you hurting? Call 211 or, or something, something that, that gets their attention as they're driving, looking for a place to, to park with the kids and whatever.
Absolutely. Do you, do you still have our CAP can help huge posters and things? We usually put them up in all your public spaces. That's one thing that we've done. We've worked with law enforcement. Most often, law enforcement gets called.
Yeah.
And so I think it sounds to me that this would be a good opportunity for us to come out again and meet with department heads and have a conversation to ensure those things are connected in. They're usually one-offs. Some people rally around, but we, it seems that we probably have to make sure. So sign, again, signs that are publicly accessible, the library, all those places, I would have that.
See, I, one of the discussions we've had is they, they might tend to seek out a park.
Yep.
Where they can, they can park the car somewhere in the garden, do whatever, 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 that maybe, maybe we could develop some signage that would just go up and say, we need help, about 2.1.
Right.
Or something like that. Because that's where they go. They have no choice. They'll go to a park with the kids or, you know, maybe it's, because it's got a tortoise body and it's got these other things, but.
Absolutely.
I don't think people recognize.
I don't think they do. And I'm gonna look over and I'm looking in here. The one thing that we don't have is we're not connected in with your summer meals program. Have you heard about the summer meals? And I'm asking about that. And forgive me, I don't know if you provide your own summer meals program through your recreation or any other option. So our summer meals program offers free meals at public locations and we often, number one, find people who are unsheltered. And we make some really good connections with, with folks in the, in the community who then know what we're doing. And so the summer meals program really is, if you can see the number of meals, is a pretty fantastic program where anyone from zero to eighteen is offered a free meal, breakfast and lunch. We often have pickup locations. So an example would be like your, this building and parking lot, we have a pickup location. So we have folks come here and we find and make connections. That sounds to me like we need to make more connections.
We did that through Oyster River, that the bus is actually.
They did that for COVID and those things. If it's going to continue, then we're gonna keep it continuing. But if it's not going to continue, this is what, this is our non-COVID, this is our non-COVID meal program that we do. I don't even want to discuss our COVID meal program, yes, which is so important. So that would also, I think, to your point, Mr. Chairman, about connecting people to services and seeing us and being more visible, maybe more folks could, could come in.
And that's one of the things that I keep talking about with having the way to connect and communicate. We have the eCrier, but also having the Facebook page, having the opportunity, maybe we have every day, one day a week is we have a place that all these different groups can host and let people know, both to get donations and also to reach out and have a help.
We don't really have public bathrooms in Lee, so they would probably be stopping in at the gaps, you know, places. That would be a place to put signs.
You want to tell us?
When Lee, that's where they would have their option, not those in the woods.
Absolutely. But it seems we should also ensure that we're getting out with our laundry cards and our passes and the accessibility for showers and those things. So when you do encounter or making sure we're getting out, because people do forget and think, ah, they'll be okay, but it's not true. So we have to make, ensure we have that. Our social media is a really great way to share things and vice versa. If you have a community channel or things that we can do, always happy to do a PSA and have them be out there because people have that. But you will see, really, the next two weeks, our goal is by the first, we can remember to send it again, but quick, how do you help your constituents type thing that you could share in the Crier or anything else out there. But really, too, if you know anyone that's in need, and particularly with housing and emergency services, that's a big need for us right now. And there'll be a homeowners program that's coming out to help for people as well. We're not administering that. We're gonna give everyone the information going through, plus child tax credit, all those things that people can do to help keep money in their pocket.
Very.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Yeah, great. And so my one last pitch is I'm looking for board members. So who would like to be a board member? Would you?
Yes, I would.
All right, please. This is how I got someone from New Durham as well. I would love for you to be, I really did mean this. So part of Community Action, we're a private, partake board, a third elected officials, a third people with lived experience and a third private. And we have been talking about how we need to have more connections out to smaller communities. And so.
Yay.
There we go. And I don't know what I'm getting myself into. Is that what I should talk about? Like why you volunteer? Have a do this or that and those things. I know, look at your smile. Now I'm concerned. But anyways.
None of us are saying.
None of you is saying anything. I will definitely reach out and we will connect up and I will see you and we'll talk about how to get you guys more info. This is great. Thank you so much. We appreciate this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate what you guys are doing, too. It's good to see everybody.
Nice to meet you all.
Goodman Community Health?
I'm here.
Great.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to see you. I don't think I've had the opportunity to meet any of you. I'm Helen Wong. So thank you for letting me be here and thank you for your past support. I am representing Greater Seacoast Community Health, which is a network of community health centers. That includes Goodman Community Health, which is based in Somasworth, New Hampshire, Families First in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and Linnock City Pediatrics in Rochester, New Hampshire. You might be familiar with all of them. This is a relatively recent development. In 2018, the merger happened. So we're still evolving and growing as a, as a team. Also, part of our network is SOS Recovery Community Organization, which has a number of peer recovery centers in Dover, Rochester, Hampton and soon in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. And the Strafford County Public Health Network is also a program of Greater Seacoast Community Health. We serve all of Strafford County, a lot of cities in eastern Rockingham County and southwestern York County, Maine. About sixteen thousand people every year. That includes all of our programs, so peer recovery and all of our medical, dental and other programs. We offer services to everybody regardless of ability to pay. And we do every year have a number of people who are uninsured or underinsured. Within the past recent years, that has ranged the numbers of uninsured between fourteen to eighteen percent of our population. Last year, we served just shy of fifteen thousand people. So it was an unusual year and we struggled to quickly evolve to meet the needs of people who are isolated and reluctant to seek out services. So we quickly really shaped our operational model to offer telehealth services, virtual programs, and we were very effective at that. And I think it was very well received by a lot of patients. But this year, we've really started to focus on growing our patient population, reaching out to people to ensure those who fell through the gaps last year, for whatever reason, were afraid to seek out preventive services or regular healthcare that they might need, get them back in and engaged, but also reach out to new patients as well. So we're hoping to see growth in our patient population by the end of this year. Another really positive development that's happening is Families First, it will be moving to a larger facility at the end of this year, which is greatly needed. We are literally sitting on top of each other in our offices and it's just not conducive to patient safety or staff safety. So we're really excited about that development as well. A couple of things to note is that I think it's really important to understand, all of our services are integrated, which really helps for the patient experience as far as efficient. as far as efficiency and ease of access. We offer primary care, dental, oral health care, pediatric care, behavioral health counseling, including substance use treatment as well as substance use counseling, both in a group setting as well as individual setting. And we also have a family resource center, and we work very closely with Betsy's group too. We offer home visiting services, voluntary parent support programs, group programs, and we also have a kinship care program as well. All of those services are voluntary and they're free of charge, as are the peer recovery services that we offer to anybody who would need those services. They're free of charge. I think most of our patients who are not uninsured, most of them are covered by Medicaid. Usually it varies, but it's usually 40% to 45% every year. And our overall patient population is low income. Last year, over 60% were below 100% on the federal poverty level, which if memory serves me, is about 26,500 per family four. So we really target our outreach to those communities and try to engage people. We don't turn anybody away regardless of their lack of resources or ability to pay. Two other quick things I'll mention, we're talking about homeless services. Work closely again with Betsy's team as well as the shelters in the area, particularly Crossroads House in Portsmouth. We have a mobile healthcare team that specifically works and tries to identify people who are housing unstable or experiencing homelessness. And so we serve currently five communities. The team is really trying to grow and reach more communities. Last year, we had to repurpose the vans to use them for COVID testing, but now they're back out on the street and are regrowing. So we're reaching out in communities in Milton, Rochester, Portsmouth, Dover, and et cetera currently. So anything that we can provide to you to make sure people are aware that we are bringing services out into the community for them would be helpful, because I'm not sure everybody is aware. And that a lot of folks who are experiencing homelessness are very isolated. And last year, many chose not to seek out shelter because of COVID. And our team is at a hard time, you know, getting them re-engaged and finding them, again, frankly. And then lastly, I just want to mention, in addition to all of the comprehensive services that we offer, we offer social work services and enabling services. So helping town welfare kind of alleviate the burden a little bit on town welfare by helping people access benefits that they might be eligible for, understanding and navigating those processes, identifying other community resources that they could take part in or benefit from, and helping to make those connections. As well as transportation, you know, oftentimes we'll have people who have just a hard time getting to and from our places of business. So we have social workers who will work very closely with them to make sure their needs are met and try the best that we can to connect them with resources and make sure that they're, we're breaking down the barriers to care as much as we possibly can. Oftentimes, you'll hear us talk about the social determinants of health. You know, it's more than just your physical situation, but there's all kinds of other factors that are weighing people down and impacting their ability to live a fulfilling life. And so a lot of what our social work and enabling services staff do is just that, trying to identify the barriers and help people overcome them. With that, I'll stop. I think those are the highlights I wanted to mention. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me.
Can you remind me how many people from Lee?
I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. Yes, so last year, we served 63 residents. And I think when I looked back, that's pretty standard year to year. I just looked back the past few years and it was 60 to 75, or 73, I think. So it's about that range that we see come to us every year. And mostly it's primary care, oral health care services. But like I said, many can take advantage of all those other services that we offer underwater.
I have a question. I'm sorry that other people left, actually, I should have asked it sooner. As a group, are you cooperative with everybody? I mean, does everybody know, are you cooperative or are you competitive? I mean, sometimes, sometimes, you know, the funding depends on how many heads you run through or whatever. I was just wondering, as a group, do you meet periodically to talk about things you could do better or together or whatever?
Certainly from my perspective, I hope that everyone in the room would agree with me that we try, when there are opportunities, to be collaborative and talk about ways to address a situation collaboratively, especially if it's going to help more people, that that's always the approach that we'll want to take. Certainly from our organizational perspective, there's many senior leadership staff, I believe, who serve on various boards or advisory committees. So you know, the Connections for Health, the Integrated Delivery Network, which is now ramping down, that was one that many of our staff were involved in heavily and helped support many organizations, I would think, in the room here with me today, as well as other boards and communities. We communicate often, just like our family resource center staff have been in touch with Betsy Andrew Parker's staff to talk about what we're both doing. But that's enough to say that there isn't, I won't lie, there's definitely some healthy competition that is just, needs to happen because there's limited funding. And sometimes when an opportunity for grant funding comes out, there's specific geography where we kind of cover the same area as part of that. So we're both in essence applying for funding for our programs. But that doesn't mean if one entity gets funding and the other doesn't, that that collaboration stops or ends at all. I think it's a fluid, a fluid thing.
Thank you.
I hope everybody agrees. Is that okay?
No, absolutely.
Was that all right? Yes. No?
Well, no, I'm just saying like, for, sorry. Like Ready Rides, our volunteer drivers' hours that they put in counts towards fundraising as per hour money. And we can't possibly use all the hours, the thousands of hours. So we gift our hours to Meals on Wheels and CAP to help them reach their fundraising goals. And so any excess we have, we share with them. And then like her, where she's located, it is in the exact towns we're not located in. So we do, like, we do, we work together.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great. Everybody else?
Okay. Thank you, no, no, very much, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
It's great, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Homeless Center for Stratford County?
I have to watch my voice at residence. I just finished seven months ago a stint on the, I was the chairperson with Select Board in Barrington.
Congratulations.
So I know what you're all putting into this. And I know it's exhausting and I know it's rewarding. So I'll be back again, I just have a new grandchild, so I wanted to spend a year with her. So a little bit about the Homeless Center for Stratford County. We embarked 37 months ago on building a brand new shelter that's located 13 miles from this municipality. I think we're a little bit closer than Crossroads and a little less closer than my friend's place. We have a two-generational approach to ending homelessness. And what that means is that we focus very strongly on being sure that the children we serve have absolutely no adverse events within our four walls, that we focus on enrichment activities, and that we get them out into the world to see things they otherwise haven't seen. Because what we find is, if we can reduce the number of adverse childhood events, we can reduce mental health symptoms, then the next generation is less likely to experience homelessness. We are very data-driven. I went back to school at age 50 to get another master's degree in public policy and I learned to be extremely data-driven. So we use an Arizona Self-Sufficiency Matrix. And as clients come to us, we measure where they're at, we measure where they're at at three months, six months, so on and so forth. What's most important about us is only about 7% of our budget comes from municipalities in Stratford County that we serve. We do not take state funding. We do not get federal funding. So we receive about $10,500 of our $168,000 budget from the municipalities we serve, and then we fundraise the rest. Our outcomes are that in the past 30, I gotta get this right. Past 37 months, we have placed 34 family units in permanent housing, over 120 people. And we've had a 94% retention rate of that housing because we have an aftercare program and we follow them. And we do housing first, money goes to housing first. I can tell you, you asked a great question about collaboration. I can tell you that you're going to hear from Cornerstone VNA. They've saved the lives of at least two of the elderly women that I have sheltered. They came into our shelter and helped with housekeeping services and some care and nursing that the clients needed, so they could self-care in a shelter environment. I can tell you that CAP has helped me with six security deposits of those 34 family units. You're going to hear from Oyster River Woman Aid and they've helped me with car repairs for a single mom that got a better job and needed a car fix. So when you ask about collaboration, it's there. And it's an amazing thing and it's what helps us get individuals and families sheltered and move to permanent housing. I took this role on in September of 2018 with the goal to build a brand new shelter. Started with a million dollar budget. It ballooned to 1.7 million for the new shelter in the land during COVID. And I'm happy to tell you that in two weeks, we should be opening our doors with 150% capacity of what we have. In a beautiful facility, yes. In a beautiful facility at a time where this 0.6% vacancy rate in rental housing is just pushing all of our limits. How we get clients into housing is also collaborative. We work with a group called Home for All and a program called Affordable Housing Incentive Programs. And we're a tier-one provider, so these are landlords that are willing to take on voucher programs. And every one of those 34 family units I described to you have terrible credit scores in the 500s and most have had an eviction and we still got them housed. So there's ways to do this that are effective. It's exhausting work and it is the most rewarding work I have done in my 54 years of life. What can I tell you?
Your first facility was at Waste Management, right?
Yes, yes, it was.
So are you moving out of there or are you staying?
Has anyone driven by Lowe's in Rochester recently? There's a beautiful gray building on Route 202 on 18 Acres. Yes, and it has 10 rooms that can provide 40 people with shelter each night. Custom design, I can't say this with certainty, but I am pretty darn sure, about 90% sure, we are the very first property that was bought up specifically for this issue that built a brand new facility on the issue, on the land.
So you don't use the facility at Waste Management anymore?
So, well, they, we got a free lease. We, the Homeless Center became homeless. No, so we had, we had plenty of donors. We had 37 months to pull this together and so, yeah. Huge, huge generous donors, a lot of individuals that gifted 100,000, 75,000, 40,000. They're, I'm amazed every day at what this community has done for its community. So, but we do have about 40,000 more dollars in costs since Waste Management is not plowing our working lawn. Not mowing our lawns anymore, I gotta get used to all this, by the way. I learned the other day, I have a backflow preventer I have to have inspected twice a year. I'm learning things as I go, things that were cared for for us that become part of our budget now, so. You have supported us for years, we're very grateful. Very rarely do we get Manbury, Durham, and Lee clients, but we do. Mostly what we get is phone calls from the welfare officers or I've had phone calls from Manbury Town Hall. And they're asking what can we do? And we never hang up a phone without giving at least three areas of referral that we know will help the people. So sometimes it keeps them housed and they don't lose their home. Which is the best case.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
AIDS Response Seacoast?
Hi, everyone, my name is Tamara Lee Woods and I am the director from AIDS Response Seacoast, the new director. And I've been a medical case manager there for over 10 years and took over as director a few months ago. So AIDS Response has been on the Seacoast providing medical case management to people living with HIV since 1987. We serve clients in all of Rockingham and all of Stratford County. And we're the only provider of HIV case management services in the Seacoast of New Hampshire. In Lee, we serve between two to five residents. We never give our exact numbers because of HIPAA and PHI things and the stigma that's unfortunately still attached to HIV. What we do is we assist people with HIV enrollment and access to Medicaid, to Medicare and private insurance. We also provide access to medications. HIV, if anyone's familiar with it, has thankfully changed a great deal through the years with access to life-saving medications. People can live a fairly normal and healthy life, but those medications can cost up to $3,000 a month per pill, I mean, for one type of medication. So we work very, very closely with the state of New Hampshire through what's called an ADAT program. It's an AIDS drug assistance program, it's called New Hampshire Care. And the only way to access those programs in the state of New Hampshire is through a case manager. So anyone underneath 500% of the poverty level that is living in Stratford or Rockingham County would connect with us and we would help them get connected to this, to this program. And on that note, our clients are, we serve anyone under 500% of the poverty level, but our clients are overwhelmingly under 200% of the poverty level, I would say, with at least 60%, 70% under 100% of the poverty level. So living on very, very little income. We also provide referrals and assistance with other programs such as disability, fuel assistance and housing programs, or help with medical transportation. We give referrals to primary care, infectious disease, mental health counseling and substance use supports. And of course, use all of the people in this room as much as possible to support our clients and have collaborative relationships and some MOUs with different agencies throughout the Seacoast. We gave nine housing assists to residents of, sorry, emergency assists, housing and utilities last year. And last year was a really unusual year with a higher than number of assists, especially early on in the pandemic, when suddenly people found themselves shut down without an income, trying to navigate unemployment benefits or not being able to navigate it and unsure how that they would get food on the table or pay their bills. And we were able to pivot very quickly and give emergency assistance. Especially those first three months, we ended up helping a lot of folks. We also have a food pantry. Clients can come in up to twice a month to use the food pantry and we'll deliver food if need be to all of our catchment area. And we can also mail out food cards to area grocery stores. The one thing about clients living with HIV is that it's a long-term commitment. So a lot of our clients have really intensive needs and they are trying to navigate really complex psychosocial systems. And so we are there, a lot of our clients have been our clients for five, 10, 15, 20 years. We're so excited that we finally actually have clients in their 70s and one is about to turn 80 this year, which is, which is pretty exciting for us because it's just not something that ever happened. And all of our services are always provided free of charge for people living with HIV. So Lee has always been a supporter for ARS for years and we appreciate that so much and we're grateful that you're considering continuing to support us. Any questions?
So, signage card?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'm Alice Tansy and I'm a resident of Lee for 35 years. But I also am a CASA volunteer, so I'm not sure if everybody knows what CASA is. A court-appointed special advocate. So as a special advocate, or in New Hampshire, we're actually a guardian, guardian ad litem. We work with the child. So this is a child that's been removed, anybody from birth to 21, that's been removed from their home due to, this is due to the court system. So it can be violence, drugs, it's usually domestic violence, neglect, any number of reasons. But anyway, so we are the representative for the child. We work closely with DCYF. DCYF is working with the parents and they're, a child can view DCYF as being the bad people. They took them out of the home, they, the parents are now separated. They are, you know, dealing with either one, you know, the child is visiting, but there, it's the CASA who will be the person that pulls it together for them. So we're volunteers, the court, we function in court. We fully participate in each hearing that they have, representing the child. So just for an example of a child, like a teenager, may say, you know, they put me in this foster home, but I used to go to Oyster River and now I'm in Rochester and I wanna go back to Oyster River. So that would be something that as the CASA, you know, I would advocate for. So right now, my child is two, he just had a birthday. So he's, he's not verbal, I mean, he's not gonna tell me what he wants, but, but I, I work with parents. And he had been in full-time daycare, he had been with other children. And it was like, okay, this is a need that's not being met, you know? He's been placed in three foster homes since March. So it's to get this point across to the judge and he needs to be put into a daycare. He needs some routine in his life. And, and the point is for the judge to, you know, if you present your case, to then put that as an order. And the judges do listen very carefully. They, they have a lot of respect in the family court, so.
I'm sorry, they have a lot of.
A lot of respect for the CASA in the family court. It's, you're not advocating for either parent. So they're hearing, you know, the mother's lawyer, the father's lawyer and DCYF. The CASA is not biased to, to either parent. The CASA is just looking out for what is best for that child. And so right now, there's five children from Lee that are in this system. So it's any child that's a foster child through the court system. And so right now, there's five children in Lee and that could be one family, three families, five families. I, I really don't know, I don't know who the kids are. I don't even know who the other CASAs in Lee are. It's all very confidential. But a lot of demands, particularly through the pandemic, through the opioid crisis, has created a huge volume of children. There's babies that go right from the NICU to a foster home. And that's happening all the time. I just work for, out of Portsmouth, Dover and Rochester Courts. And so Rochester, I think, is the second busiest court, family division court in the state. Manchester, I think, is number one and Rochester is number two. So the demands are huge, a lot of pressure on CASA because they lost many of their volunteers. A lot of volunteers were older. And they lost a lot of them with COVID. People need a lot of computer skills because it all went with Zoom and that's how you're communicating was FaceTime, Zoom. And we're back in court now, we're having in-person visits with the children. And so I report, there's two managers. And they, my manager in Dover has 45 CASAs underneath her carrying 52 children. So you can just see, she's just in Dover and she's one of two people in Dover. So I don't know what the numbers were prior to this, but I, I think, I don't know if they would tell you that much because I think it could just change in a day, you know? But anyway, when I saw what they asked for a donation, I thought, that's crazy. They need more than that. And why aren't some of these other towns donating? But anyway, it's something that, if you'd like to volunteer or know anybody that would like to volunteer. I was a nurse for 42 years and I never got the type of satisfaction out of doing nursing that I, I have out of doing this, so.
I have a question. You mentioned there is 50-some kids and only 30-some CASA people. I thought only, you only got one each.
No, because you can get a family.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you may get, you may get siblings. So every day, I get emails that come from the managers all over the state and it'll be, particularly up in the North Country. And they'll say like, out of Littleton Court, and, you know, they have five children that were removed, a sibling group removed from a household the night before. And I mean, some of the situations are horrifying. And, and they're looking for a CASA, so it's, it's difficult, you know?
I've been planning to take the training for the last 10 years, so.
Time to do it. She's been waiting to do the training.
Yeah, I think it'll be the most fulfilling thing you ever did. It's, it's amazing. And, you know, I've worked as a nurse, I've worked with a lot of different groups and like Goodwin Health was here, Avis Goodwin, and, you know, I did oncology and I worked with a lot of people and it, this is just totally different. It's putting a family back to get, try, the idea, the goal is reunification, to get that family back together, so. You know, these other groups are doing the work to, you know, house them and drug rehab and, you know, anger management classes, a lot of that. But, but CASA is there for the child.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions?
Scott?
Yes, question.
Okay.
And Bambi mentioned it a little bit, but can you speak about, because you go through an extensive training process for this. It's not just like, oh, you're volunteering, then you're sent out.
No.
There's a trial process that you go through. Can you speak a little bit about that?
The classes, I think I did 40 hours of Zoom classes. And in my group, there were maybe 20 people at the start and probably 14, 13, 14 of us finished. Because some people, they just don't understand, when you tell them that you have to go to court and stand up and talk to the judge, people are like, no, not doing it. But they, what was the question? Oh, the training. So, so every month, they have in-service. And so like this month, it's on trauma from just being a witness of violence, not, you know, a child who's never been, you know, neglected or physically harmed, but witnessing violence. So the trauma that, you know, comes from that, which is lifelong. And then they have people that, and these are almost, they're all Zoom. And then, you know, like I found out about a, a riding stable over in Concord, which what they do, so Casey Dugan, who was in California, I don't know if people remember that case. She had been kidnapped and kept in like a cage for like 16 years. And when she got out, she, when she escaped, she and her mother, her biological mother, went to Colorado and went to this program. She got a lot of money from the state of California because the police had responded to this house several times and just like, oh, okay. And so something like $30 million. And so she gives out all these grants. So there's this program over outside of Concord that is supported by her. And so you find out about all these different, you know, programs that are out there to assist your children. So, so every month, and then there's written material that they're always sending out and it's, it's a lot. It's not, yeah, it's not like something you just go and sign up to volunteer to like shell books in the library or something, you know? And, and some people just can't, you know, you have to be a person that can deal with people that are, been traumatized or, or, you know, angry people. You have to be able to deal with angry people. And foster parents, you know, and there's good and there's not so good, you know? I mean, in March, he was removed from his home, this little boy, and he's now in his third foster home. So do no fault, he means two, you know? Do no fault of his own, so you, you learn a lot, you learn a lot. Is there any, do you have a question?
No, I'm all set. No, it's just.
Thank you very much.
Very much, thank you. Cornerstone here?
So we have four copies, so who wants one? We want to each share.
So is anyone not familiar with Cornerstone V and A? So we've been around since 1913. We do home care services to individuals in their home and we do ages birth to death. And one of the biggest things that we struggle with over the past years, shocking COVID, in staffing. So a lot of emergency mandates went out, a lot of, most recently vaccination mandates. So we're really struggling along with other healthcare providers with nursing shortage. And then how do we meet the needs of all of our patients and all of, so we serve 43 different communities between New Hampshire and Maine. So one of the things that we're struggling right, right now, currently, is trying to figure out, you know, do we have to restrict our area at all? And we have to do that strategically while still meet the needs of, of that vulnerable population. Most of our patients are over the age of 65, but we get, you know, a varied of ages, you know, through that birth to the, to the end of life. We do home care, we do private duty services, we do palliative care services where nurse practitioners actually go into the home and work with community physicians to help treat patients so that they stay out of the hospital. We have hospice services and because of our mission-driven and nonprofit status, we give a lot back to the community. So someone mentioned that we, you know, go to the shelters. We work very collaboratively with everybody in the room. The IDN that was referred to earlier is Integrated Delivery Network and that was something formed in Stratford County and other regions in the state and we were part of that because it's healthcare services and then we all have to collaborate when we have a patient in their home who is, you know, being threatened to get kicked out of their house to, we have social workers that go into the house, rehab services, nursing, L and As. And our social workers really went above and beyond during this COVID because a lot of services were restricted from the homes. And so they were filling out applications, they were making copies, they were doing everything they could because these individuals needed it. One of the best things that came out of COVID, if anything did, was technology. We have a very good telehealth program at our agency. And anyone that's not familiar, they're basically small tablets that go into the home and they have Bluetooth equipment for blood pressure, scales. They check your pulse ox and they ask daily screening questions to patients. In addition, there's a video so that they see a nurse at our office and that nurse can see them in the home. So we were able to implement and deploy those and we doubled its size. We went from 40 units to 80 units and we're keeping those 80 units. And that's really helped with the shortage and the surge that we got during COVID. And those are under-reimbursed, if not not reimbursed. So Medicare doesn't cover the cost of those units at all. With the state of emergency and Governor Sununu, we actually did start to get some funding through Medicaid and commercial payers with telehealth. But that's a smaller population that we serve. Most of our patients are Medicare, about 70%. And we do not turn down patients regardless of their ability to pay. So we continue to seek funding from towns and the continued support of our towns to be able to do all the non-funded things that we do through specialized services, through our telehealth program. We are huge in helping administer the COVID vaccines in the community for homebound patients and their loved ones. So there's a lot that we do, but a lot of people don't know that we do. And so I'll just open it up to questions if you have any.
Everybody all set?
Did you tell us already the number of?
So I actually ran some numbers before I came. It's on the report that was sent over, I think it was 88. But I wanted to see a comparison. So last year, from January to the September 30th, it was 38 clients. And this year, year-to-date through September 30th, we're already at 50.
How many, I'm sorry?
50, yeah, just went from 38 to 50, just in a nine-month period comparison. And it's growing and growing.
Thank you very much. Wakepoint?
Hello, my name is Paul Solarm from Wakepoint and we just appreciate your, your support of us in the previous years and, and we're asking for level funding this year. We, we've previously asked for $1,000. That's a relevant point to what I'm about to get to, which is this past year, we provided 47 hours to five, five Lee residents, if you recall, if you stayed up night reading, reading petitions to you. That is down, we were at 90, 194 hours across 10 Lee residents. So the number of residents, I'm sorry, families that we've served has gone down by half. That's a direct result of COVID. Our level funding request therefore is, is less per cap, per person than the price of us maintaining our operations. I, I will say to you honestly that regardless of your decision, we, we come to the aid of families in crisis. These, these hours that we've provided Lee are for family therapy, families in crisis, whether that's abuse, incarceration or substance abuse. We don't deal with substance abuse directly, though we deal with the, the family fallout subsequent to it. So you might ask why we're asking for level funding despite the fact that our, our services have dipped. Should they, and I anticipate they will in a post-COVID environment, resume their, their, their previous levels, we will be there just the same. You know, and our family services are intensive therapy services, like I said, for families in crisis, which is in home. Part of the reason it's limited by COVID is that we pride ourselves in going to the community and to the home. We have been greatly served by telehealth and many of our services are improved where we've experienced cost reductions, which are fantastic in being able to provide telehealth. But for many of the services we provide for the families in Lee, it necessitates we be in the community and therefore I think the numbers have dropped. I, I, one of the reasons I anticipate that it's possible that our numbers will increase, though nobody has a crystal ball, is that we have just entered a contract with the state called Voluntary Services where rather than waiting till child abuse has been determined, we will go in when, where, it's called voluntary services for a reason, which is families will volunteer for it. Where I think New Hampshire has one of the lowest found rates, which means if there's an allegation of child abuse, New Hampshire doesn't verify them at the rate that other states do, which isn't that there's less child abuse per capita in New Hampshire, just simply. in New Hampshire, just simply that we don't have the hands to verify that they've happened. And so what we're going to do is ask families to volunteer for services prior to, unhappily, these cases being found and they're remanded to state services like DCYF. And so for this reason, you know, we're, we, we want to stay present in all communities and seek funding from all communities that we serve. Uh, I have, I've appeared before this board before in the past, I recognize many of your faces. I'm happy to answer, answer any questions. Uh, you know, I think we are a rather large organization and the reason we're here is because our work goes across so many communities in the state. I, I would say one of the things, you know, I, I've heard pets, collaboration, um, and a couple of other themes that I'd be happy to talk to. Um, one of the things, one of the big initiatives at Wakepoint and one of the advantages of being large rather than small, I mean, there are advantages to both being small and large. You can be more responsive as a smaller agency or your funding is more significant statistically or percentage-wise speaking, is that what we're seeking to do is, is, we have fourteen offices statewide, we're seeing to turn them all into family resource centers, which you've heard around here. In addition, what we want to do is go through the, the process of turning them into family resource centers of quality, which is a federal designation, which is a process by which we interact with each community, each of the fourteen communities to establish what their particular needs are and what they need in a hub agency, which is the kind of thing that a larger agency like my own can offer. Um, as for pets, it's incredibly poignant because we have, we have people who decline, we, we serve running homeless youth between twelve and twenty-two. We've had, we've had kids decline our services for not, for the, the shelter not offering shelter for the pets. And, you know, I, I suspect this would go gangbusters, but, you know, I think we'd probably raise a ton of money if it were our business, if it were on a purview, we're just so busy serving. But I think if we built a shelter for pets, we would do quite well. I think, I think New Hampshire would offer that up in a nanosecond. Um, it's just not, you know, it's beyond our scope right now, but it was interesting. And as for collaboration, I, you know, we offer twenty-four different programs from, the width and breadth of my agency is from neonatal care to pre-palliative care. And we, I can't even tell you how many agencies, I mean, if you want to grill me on one of them, I can't tell you how many agencies we cooperate with. And just along on the seacoast, we have become so collaborative with Richie McFarlane, I don't know if you know the agency, that we're actually merging with them because we would trade, we would trade children back and families back and forth depending on specific case managers' abilities so freely. We just decided, and I think it's been ratified by both boards, I don't know if it's completely public, but we're, we're merging. Yeah, I need cameras here because I'm sure I'll get in trouble with my CEO.
There's a big signpost.
Yeah, I'm like the guy who robs and then trips in front of the camera and plays that. It's less, it's less a, it's just a merger because our, our, we have for decades been, you know, working so closely together. But I think it just made good sense both, but, and so that's, that's what we ask you for funding for, is to continue our activities.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Haven?
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm Julie Wigan. I am the program director of client services for Haven. And so I'm here in Kathy's stead, she had other things to do today. I don't know if all of you have met Kathy Bev, our executive director, before. Um, and here to ask for the same funding that we typically get, um, and to talk about our services. So we provide, um, domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking and stalking services to, um, all of Rockingham and all of Stratford County. We also have prevention services and we were able to serve Lee last year, even though classes were in a weird situation. So we served, um, through our education numbers, three hundred and nineteen individuals. We had two hundred and eighty-nine students we still saw and thirty teachers that we saw in our prevention education. Speaking of the direct service, we, um, served sixteen, which is down from our typical numbers during COVID for Lee, and we had thirty service hours of, um, uh, support in our twenty-four hour hotline and, um, seven days a week shelter program. We do not have any shelter bed nights of Lee residents this year. Um, but with COVID, as every, with every organization has mentioned here, our shelter had to minimize its capacity and so we're using the hoteling model. And so you can imagine the hoteling model is a really complicated model, getting to the clients. Um, when you're there with them day by day, there's, um, a presence that has, that I don't know, unless you've gone through COVID, you can qualify what presence means, meaning that the people that are around you that are seeking services, it's not an hour at a time that you're meeting with them, but anytime that they need something and you can, um, have visibility and transparency around what they're doing. And so, um, I would like to ask any questions because I work better at answering questions than just giving a sort of a speech here.
I have a very general question. I should have asked it earlier. I could kick myself. For, for, for everybody, is there any whispers or talks about potential influx of migrants into New Hampshire and what the impact of that is going to be on some of these services that?
And I, and I'm not sure that I can speak generally to that question, but what I can speak to is, um, I started in my position in March of twenty nineteen, so most of my time at Haven has been during COVID. And I will say that, um, we are servicing more and more immigration, um, demographic, um, as the time moves forward, which, and what, the other thing that I will say is with COVID and with all of the complications and the systems and the complications within the systems, is that every case gets more complex. So if we are emotionally supporting, which are, we have all, a huge volunteer, um, that go through thirty-two hours of confidential training, because that's the other thing with our numbers, our numbers, we're not as data-driven, driven as the, the homelessness because if we ask somebody to tell us the town they're from, they, we have to respect their now in, in all ways, right? And so, um, so there's a dance there and so, um, getting back to the general question you asked, um, those systems with immigrations, getting them, because our goal is for empowerment and self-sufficiency. And so with the immigration, um, I'm struggling with population, there we go, the immigration population, there's, there become stoppers as to how they can, can become self-sufficient because you can't necessarily work if you don't have a visa, you can't necessarily work if you're not on track for citizenship. And there are all these obstacles that get in the way, that then, um, somebody in our emergency shelter to move them on, they're staying way longer than they would have ever stayed in previous times.
My concern, I think it is, is that there's going to be a much larger drawdown on the resources that are, that are going to happen to use to get these people into the system and then to support them through the system. I, I don't know just how, I, I think it's going to be a serious impact on, I really do.
And I don't know that I can disagree, but I certainly can't speak to it with any, I can just tell you what I've witnessed. And our human resources is the biggest piece for our, for the work that we do, our service provision, is human resource-driven. We, um, you know, we have, we've grown so much in the last, um, couple of years. We have forty volunteers, five night staff. Um, now I think we have twenty-two direct client service advocates in some capacity, housing shelter and the twenty-four seven, and then our five-person education team and training team. Um, and so to what I was talking about, the increased population of, um, where our resources are spent is in human resources, if you will.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, you know, for all the.
Run off so quickly.
All the support you have done in the, oh, yes, you have done it last, yeah.
Last time Kathy was here, I think it was two thousand and nineteen, might have been two thousand and eighteen, but, um, and I think she alluded to it, but I don't know if it happens, so that's my nature of my question. Uh, in terms of getting into Massway to do your program in there, are you in there now or are you not in there still?
Not to my, Massway, and I'm not even familiar with.
Massway School, it's an elementary school.
Oh, yes, that's who we're, yeah, we're, yeah, that's the numbers that I.
You are in there.
Yeah, even during twenty twenty-one, our fiscal year goes from July one through June thirty. And even during the COVID times, because these are current numbers, we saw two hundred and eighty-nine students and thirty teachers.
Okay. Because at some point, there was an issue about you guys going in there and then there was some changes. We won't go into details, but, um, last time I, I remember her, she was almost there and I didn't know if she actually.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I would say that our relationship with Lee generally is a very, um, strong and positive relationship. So, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, ReadyRides?
My name's Tajah Fullwater and I am the volunteer coordinator for ReadyRide. This is a magnet that our drivers put on the outside of their vehicle so that they can be easily recognized. Um, ReadyRide, as you may have read, is that we provide free transit to elderly and the disabled, anyone over fifty-five, um, to medical appointments and even any age group if they are temporarily disabled or disabled. So we've had a nineteen-year-old who, um, went on a bike ride, fell off her bike and got a really bad concussion and then couldn't drive herself to work. So for the time that she was going to the neurologist, Rain Ray was able to provide her rides. I also didn't bring one for, I didn't have any, but this is a little bit of.
We can share.
What, um, it looks like when we put these in the doctor's office. And we, um, haven't put out this for a while because of COVID, but this is like a little newsletter that we would send out. And, um, and then these are the triple quest journals that we send to each elderly or any registered rider that registers with us. And, um, and so we try to make ourselves visible and available in doctor's offices with social workers. I've gone into Wentworth Douglas, met with social workers. Um, Cornerstone V and A often contacts us, um, the Manchester Veterans Association, we, to give VA rides to veterans who, because the VA system also gives veterans rides, but now that the veterans are able to go to any doctor they want, they often can't get a ride to their own personal doctor, they'd have to get a ride to a veteran clinic, so they've called ReadyRide in. So that is, um, something that we collaborate with the other people. And, uh, as I mentioned before, our volunteer hours that are given up to these other places so they can meet their funding also is something that we do to try and make sure we're sharing and communicating and working together. Meals on Wheels also provides rides to places, um, sometimes that we can't go and, um, has the ability to take people on shopping trips. So maybe our person will be called about giving a ride and then Meals on Wheels will pick them up and take them to Walmart or something like that. But we do work and make sure that whoever is contacting us for rides, I also communicate through the two-one-one system and CAP and let them know that there are other things for them out there to, we say, look, on Wednesday, if you get a ride from Meals on Wheels, you can get your hair done at the salon, you can get your banking done at the bank, you can pick up some groceries and you can buy some toothpaste, right? And then on Thursday, you can call us and we'll take you to the doctor, right? So we're trying to make sure that every elderly person knows about us, so I try to get the word out. Um, you've funded us since two thousand and thirteen, I think since we initially started. This is only, I'm in two and a half years now and this is the first time I've had to sit in front of a town, so my voice is a little shaky. Sorry, I used to my own board, but every month, not this one. Yeah, but I, um, yeah, COVID was hard for us. We, we did meals, we, our drivers, uh, only drove to dialysis, blood transfusion and absolutely critical cases. We tried not to do, um, just those routine checkups because telehealth was coming out and all of those things. So at the end, when the doctor's offices started opening, we just like got so busy. But you know what happened? We went from sixty-three volunteer drivers down to seven. So we slowly got a few drivers back. And so we're at like fifteen qualified drivers who've qualified with our system, renewed everything with us, but only maybe twelve of them drive each month. So we are starting to ramp back up. So last year, if you'll give me a moment here, in two thousand and nineteen, before COVID, we were starting with Lee, we were getting up to like a hundred and eighty rides. And that was doing, you guys were doing really good, you're kind of right up, I think you're like, you know, you're doing really good, you're ahead of Madbury and New Fields at least. And, um, then COVID hits and you drop down to ninety. And that's okay because, you know, we understand only the vital things were happening. But now here we are and we're already at, as of like a month ago, we're already at eighty-five and we're only like halfway through our fiscal year. So we're looking at another hundred and eighty for next year, but we only have twelve drivers and we don't have sixty-three drivers. So almost more than your money. I need you to ask people if they want to volunteer to drive, I am not joking. Because last year, we were financially doing well because we've been saving and so we cut back our request amount, we cut it back to seven fifty because we felt as a volunteer, um, nonprofit, that you guys had always treated us really well and each of the towns had treated us really well, so we only asked fifty percent of what we normally ask. And that, I think, is to keep my base pay kind of a little bit helped and to help, because with the volunteer hours being so low, we just didn't want to have to try to fundraise or anything like that, so we wanted to give back to each town. So we're asking for the normal amount this year, but what I really like, you said earlier, if you need anything from us. So right here, I have brought a few, uh, volunteer applications, I'll sit over there on my way out. And, um, with that, um, I'd like to say that on readyrides.org, you can always go to our forums and there are volunteer applications because drivers are everything to us. Drivers are what keep us going. Because there may be someone who, like, there's this one woman, she doesn't see anybody but her ReadyRide driver, she doesn't get Meals on Wheels, she has her daughter drop off her groceries and she sees her one day a week and then she sees her ReadyRide driver. And, you know, mothers, daughters don't always get along, so they don't have marvelous conversations. So she always liked on the phone to me, always rants and raves about how much she loves her drivers. Well, one day, a volunteer driver got a, a car, a flat. And so I don't normally drive because I'm the coordinator, so I went and I picked her up and, oh my God, this woman is ready to like have me move into her spare room. She was just like, oh my gosh, you know, chatting and just so happy and I, I'm just, one day I'm just going to go take her and we're going to go get her nails done just for fun because she is just dying for company. And, and that is what really is so sad about, you know, the elderly that live alone during COVID is like they really can't get out. They do have Meals on Wheels, but Meals on Wheels was shut down. And so what we do when we take them to the doctors is we are keeping them healthy, we're keeping them in their homes so they don't have to go live in an assisted living facility so they don't lose their independence and they don't lose themselves, you know? So it's vitally important that we keep going and the only way that you do that is with volunteers. And I'm very nervous because our numbers are beginning to come back up. I mean, we were doing over three hundred rides a month through our towns because we, um, we serve nine different towns and I see that we're, and we did, oh geez, two thousand two hundred rides during, during COVID, but we did almost thirty, three thousand eight hundred rides before. And so I can't see that happening with our twelve drivers. So I would really love if maybe I could get together with somebody and maybe you could put a little article in your paper, your town paper, anything. Because even though, you know, we only provided a hundred and eighty rides or ninety rides for the town of Lee, I find that our volunteers do more than just their own town. Um, because I live in Stratford. Um, because I live in Stratford, and the woman I was just talking about is from Northwood. But I've also picked up when, um, when someone else had a conflict, I've picked up another ride in Durham and something like that. So our volunteers do that on a regular basis too. And they find that they make a lot of connections with these people, and they find it very fulfilling to do this. So of course, we do, we'd love for you to again, support our, our, um, ReadyRides. But we'd also hope that as a person, you might reach out to your family members, your town, your friends, and just see if maybe any one of them would like to think about joining us too.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Some, somebody who's a driver, maybe they're a new driver, but anyhow, how's the system work? Does he know?
Right.
I mean, I mean, he could pull up to a, to a house to pick up somebody, and, and, and let's just say they have some ailments of some kind, and they're fairly heavy, and
Oh, yeah, yeah, we do have a four-hundred-pound van. So we, 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 we say, you know, do you have a van? Oh, you have a Miata? Yeah, don't pick up that ride, right? So there is a no section. There is a no.
You know who you're picking up?
Yeah, we do.
So you know if there's gonna be any issues or anything, you know in advance.
Oh, yeah, because, um, when we do our passenger registration, because, okay, so Coast Bus System has really started ReadyRides, if you think about it. Because there was all these different churches in these nine different towns. And Jeff, he's, he works at Coast, and he was brought on. And, and the idea was that the state of New Hampshire, like you, said, why are all these people doing all these things in these different areas? Let's get them together so you're not duplicating services and put it all under one roof. And so Coast Bus Services uses a, a, a TripLink's call-in, and they, that's how they get their buses out for Coast. And so we use their very complicated computer system, and the drivers log in with their password to a more simple system that just has our rides. And, and so it's like a menu of wonderful rides, like who do I want to take today? So if you're feeling like a Bob or a Mary, you know, you can pick your ride for the day and determine what kind of conversation you're gonna have.
Should we assume that you do sign language?
Oh, yeah, me and my cousin, when we were young, we started off, do I
No, 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 I just, I thought maybe you did sign language.
Yeah, I took some classes in junior college.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean
But, um, yes, so, uh, it's a wonderful system, it keeps us, our, so we have a call center because I'm only part-time, because we do try to minimize costs. And the rest of, uh, money we have goes towards this TripLink system, which is, uh, eight in the morning to five P M. They call and they book their rides. And I'm the volunteer coordinator, so I try to keep the volunteers together and, um, on time and calling and letting the people know and giving directions and all of that to making them get where they gotta be. So, um, yeah, we, we're working with Coast Bus Systems too.
Good. Oh, I, I seem like I have all the questions.
Well, no, I was just thinking.
You mentioned something earlier that I was thinking about when you were talking. So if you would be amenable to writing something, we have an e-news that goes out, and I know ReadyRides is in there periodically. So if you could write something in terms of seeking volunteers, um, it goes out to like, what, six hundred people, something like that, a little bit more?
And I do often try to put things on like Lee Facebook page, but what I, what I find has been happening. So when COVID started, we had four hundred and fifteen passengers. Then COVID started, Lamprey Health quit their bus systems, Frisbee Health quit their bus systems. And so all of them came to us. We have five hundred and forty-seven passengers since COVID. That's a hundred and thirty more passengers than before, and we had seven drivers. So, but I think I need to buy them all new tires for their cars, um, just not reverse for gas. But, yeah, so we, we have, that's the problem about putting it on Facebook is that I always get more applications for passengers. So, because I put out, I say, seeking volunteers for ReadyRides, and I will get four or five new applications for passengers and maybe one, and just a person that maybe wants to think about volunteering. So, but you have to be over twenty-one, which is, I try to hit the UNH crowd sometimes, but it's, you know, you have to be over twenty-one.
Well, if you could write something specifically toward looking for drivers, I think that's something we could put in.
Absolutely.
I can't tell you that you're not gonna get people that are asking for
Well, we don't turn anybody down, so we do just tell them that, um, so your name goes into this, um, market. It's called the market. You're on the market, and people say, oh, can I fit that in my schedule? And so we can't guarantee, we used to have like a ninety-nine percent pickup rate, but now it's, it's down a little bit. We used to have almost no unmet needs when I first started. I was so proud, I thought, oh, my first year, almost zero unmet needs all the time, and then COVID happened, and, um, so, uh, we, we just, and we try to give them at least twenty-four to, or more hours notice if we can't pick them up so they can cancel and reschedule without any charge or fee, no-show fee or anything from their doctor's office.
Something that might be smart too, for actually thinking about having something like a volunteer fair, where your, where your, people are looking to places to volunteer. So that's, you have a different kind of experience.
Right, because you had a few places that were looking for people.
Yeah, yeah, and to give people opportunity to figure out what fit.
Yeah, because there hasn't been anything for like two years. Now they're doing fun runs again, and we used to advertise at fun runs and stuff, but then kind of stopped, so.
It's kind of interesting, because in terms of your brochure, I don't remember which one it's in, but you're offering someplace here? Yes, your referral program.
Right.
And you know when a place is desperate is when a nonprofit is offering to give away money to get somebody to come, so.
Right, because they do have to go through a criminal background check, an elderly abuse check. And driver's license check. They have to have insurance, in a, in an, insurance optional state, some people don't. So they have to have insurance, has to be a million dollars, um, which is kind of like the lowest, you know, million dollars overall. And then they have to, um, yeah, physical, or not a physical, but signed off by their doctor saying that they can drive. Because, um, you know, some people are on medication where maybe it's fine that they drive themselves, but maybe we shouldn't have you driving with people, you know? So we do ask for those things, and sometimes, um, people won't go through that, yeah.
Uber and DoorDash and those kinds of things have eaten into some of that, the people that are willing to do, willing to do it for free maybe before, or maybe they're signing it there, so.
No, the people that we've lost from is entirely COVID. And they, they either had the fear of catching COVID themselves, because a lot of our drivers were seniors who were giving back, or they were afraid of giving someone COVID and then being responsible for someone else possibly passing away. Because they've driven and exposed themselves and so, or bringing home to, maybe they have a loved one who's sick, and they don't want to bring it home to them, so.
Hopefully good news coming.
I know. So I'm gonna leave some magnets over here for anybody interested, and some volunteer applications, but also some passenger applications, because I know that, um, someone might have a family member who needs us, so. And we are free service, right, so.
Thank you very much. Uh, WomenAid?
Just like being called down for the crisis right now.
That's right.
You are the next contestant.
I should change the name today, I said it differently.
That's right.
Well, I have to tell you, this has been very educational.
Yeah, right.
I'd love it, I wish I had gotten here earlier, we had a board meeting tonight, so. Um, I apologize for our late, my name is Marie Bader, and this is Aubrey Bussi, our newest board member. So she's come along to see what we do here. WomenAid, or Oyster River WomenAid, because there's a number of WomenAids. Um, we cover Lee, Madbury, Durham, and Newmarket. So that's our, that's our area, and there are other WomenAids that cover different areas around. There's one in Portsmouth, there's one in Exeter, it's actually across the country. Um, it's completely volunteer. We have, um, a volunteer board, all of our time is volunteer. We raise money, and then what we do is we are the last resort, okay? So all of these wonderful agencies that you've heard from, when they can no longer, or people don't no longer can apply to them because they don't qualify for whatever reason, um, then somebody who will be a valid, what we call a validator, a teacher, a doctor, um, a social worker, mental health counselor, will go on our site online and fill out an application for their client, or their student, or their family they know is in crisis. And will tell us what the story is, and, um, who they have already tried to get help from, who they have gotten help from, how much they financially need, because we, we give finances. Um, we try to help people from falling through that last crack, from going homeless, or, um, so, so the validator fills out the application, and we, as a board, all online, we have, um, we have one person that's in charge of checking it out, asking them questions, and then sends it out to the rest of the board, and we can answer within an hour, uh, twenty-four hours. Um, where a lot of times, when you have a family in crisis, they have to go through so much red tape that they're gonna fall through the cracks before they get the help they need. So that's what WomenAid does. Um, and, uh, we're, our group, our chapter, I guess you recall it, uh, was started in two thousand and six. And so we're about fifteen, maybe years old this, uh, and we all serve, volunteer our, our time. Our, um, what, you have to sign up for three years?
Four years.
Okay. You have to make a commitment, right? Um, and it doesn't take a lot of time. Um, you do have to check your email every, every day to make sure there isn't a request out there that needs your input. Um, and then we all vote, um, and decide whether we should be funding this or not. And usually our discussions are around, okay, if we can help them here, right? Will that, where are they gonna get the rest of the money they need? Because we have a ceiling of how much we can give. We raise all our money through, well, before COVID, we did annual fundraisers. Um, now we are asking the towns to, to contribute, and we are, um, we participated in what's called New Hampshire Gives. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it, that was pretty exciting, wasn't it? Paying money. Uh, and because we made some money through that, much more than we would have if we did our, our normal, um, events. Um, we voted to up our amount, that we can give each, each, um, it's a, it's once every twenty-four, uh, once every twelve months, we can help someone. We don't want them to think this is where you go when you need help, right? You go to all these agencies that you've heard from, and they come to us a lot of times and say, we can do this, but we can't do this, right? Like I think one of them was talking about the fact that, you know, we helped a, a single mom with her car payment. Uh, her, her, actually, I think it was her car repairs. That's something they will, they can't, they can't qualify, uh, for, um, help at any of these agencies. So, um, yeah, the, and so as far as Lee is concerned, we have had, um, I think I put it in the, the, the application, I looked up the numbers. Um, but less than ten, um, uh, requests that we funded to them for the last year. Um, and that's about average, I think, you know? And of course, it's all confidential, so we never even deal with the client. We're dealing only with the validator, and then they tell us, okay, so the car payment, or the, or the car repair, um, they tell us, show us it, send us the invoice, and we actually pay the invoice. So that, the, um, we're never dealing with the client, that's all confidential, and we're never giving money to a client. We're giving it for whatever bill it is that will keep them going. You know, like that particular mom, as I remember, um, a single mom, she had a child with cancer, and she couldn't get him to Boston. You know, she needed the car, so it was like, okay, somebody's gonna help them. And of course, we all jumped up and down, said, we can do that? Because now that we've, we have, and we used to have a cap of five hundred dollars per person every twelve months, right? Well, the, you know, five hundred dollars fifteen years ago, it, it's not, you know, the bills that we see now are thousands of dollars. So usually what we try to do is, is we'll, uh, we've upped our, our ceiling to a thousand while we have the money. And then what we're trying to do is, is reach out to the other WomenAids. Not only are we collaborating with all the, the other agencies in, in finding help for these people, but what we do is we'll go to Portsmouth, or we'll go to Exeter, and we'll say, you know, I know this is out of your area, um, but we can do this much, can you do this much? And, and we have been funding a lot that way with other WomenAids, which we had not done before COVID. So, which is very interesting to me, I mean, we've collaborated with the other, all the other agencies, but, um, because we get a lot of referrals from them. But not with the other WomenAids, and it's kind of, kind of neat. Uh, somebody suggested a board meeting a month ago that we, we, we should probably invite them and have a party or something. So we know that we're working with them, because we don't, you know, they're volunteers too, and they're doing everything online. Yeah.
Is there a men's aid?
We give, we, I don't know why they called it WomenAid. But, but we give to men, we give to, to families, we give to children, we give, uh, yeah.
And we have men on our board.
And we did have one on our board too.
That was going for a board member.
Yeah, I know, we, we are, we have one board member that just, uh, moved out of state. So we have, we have eight, we like to have nine, because heaven forbid we disagreed on something. We would have a, a heartbreaker. We've never disagreed, but that's great.
Where's your, where's your office?
We don't have an office.
You don't have an office, so it's
It's all volunteer, right? So it's all from each of our homes or our work through our computer. We have a, a secure site that we take in the requests. Yeah, we just rotate houses to, um, actually, we just got a new board member. And we've been, we've been meeting at her house, we think we're gonna trust
Pretty, pretty good.
She's very bold, so you're not, you're not spending money on those things, you're just really on the
Oh, it's like Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got it.
And, and we're also looking to do more outreach. Um, we're reaching out to Massway, MoHerramont. Uh, we heard that there are school nurses that have a program in place for children who may need, uh, coats or, you know, Christmas gifts, and so we're gonna be doing some outreach this, this winter.
Yeah, and asking them to just, um, you know, they can be validators, the nurse can be a validator. She can go in and she can say, this family needs help, you know? And because we happen to have some money right now, which, we've never had money before, so it's it's a little scary, we, we're afraid it's gonna go away fast. But we, we thought, you know, we should, we should try something different, we should actually go to them and ask them, where can we help while we have it? Because everybody's very uncomfortable with the bank account right now. And we went to Newmarket, and they, they granted us five thousand dollars. So, yeah, it was like, okay, we gotta, we gotta get, think bigger, right? We gotta, we gotta reach out. Uh, it's, it's very rewarding, you know, if anybody ever wants to sit on a board, this is a fun board to sit on.
That's true.
And we're looking for some guys, we need some diversity. We need some diversity, or the gentleman that was on our board moved to Vermont, because he said there wasn't enough snow here. I'm not kidding, he did.
The last few years, it's been getting less and less snow.
I know. So they moved up, yeah, to Vermont, darn. So we're looking for some men to serve on our board. So if you know of anybody
Especially a Lee resident. I'm, I'm a Madbury resident, we have a couple in Newmarket, and the rest are Durham. So we're definitely looking for representation.
Yes, we'd love to have somebody from Lee, right? And if, and maybe we ought to write an article and
You could do that.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking if we have more opportunities, it's great.
Yeah, we would really like to have somebody from
A lot of great people, yes, we just have to have them know where they're needed.
And they're very busy. And they're very busy, cause we try to get volunteers and it's really hard. Can you ask a question? You said there's four towns that you serve and you mentioned, well, we already know we give to you, Newmarket, does Durham and Madbury give as well or?
We haven't asked Madbury yet.
I would suggest you ask.
We will.
We will.
Well, we did ask Durham and they did not fund us, partly because we have very few asks from Durham. It's a pretty wealthy little town there. And the most is in Newmarket. That's where we get the most asks, but we also get them from Lee and Madbury and occasionally from Durham, but not very often. And, and also the majority of our donors are in Durham. And they know that because the people we asked for the grant are the people that are giving us their own money. So our, our major funding comes from Durham, but it's all individual giving.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
We have some like fancy things for you to choose. And we're always looking for more validators too, so, you know, school counselors, nurses.
Anybody that can, can say, this is not a scam.
Enjoy it.
This is a real need in this family, yeah.
I think we have enough. Look at that. And did you get one?
Yes, see, one left. Good for you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
I have to say, people sit here all night, like, why don't you get up?
I was gonna say, you need to catch me.
We're almost done.
That's right. We believe in you.
One more. Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful day, guys.
You too.
Goodnight, ladies. Great. Last one? Matt?
ORYA. All right, if I take the mask off, vaccinated?
Yes.
But I just keep some soccer, so if you guys wanna do some fitness stuff. Do some calisthenics. It's still in my brain, just coming off the field. So how's everybody doing? Good. So, where would you like to start? I think everybody knows ORYA for the most part. We've been here for, as an organization, for just over 40 years. I used to think it was just over 30 and I recently found some paperwork that was dated to 79. They weren't official as a 501(c)(3) at that point, but they were operating as Oyster River Association. So maybe open it up to questions first, unless you'd like me to kinda go through anything?
Just, you guys, you guys are the newbies. You know about, you know about Oyster River, right?
Uh, I know a little bit about it. I did have a question for you, cause the information I read didn't actually say.
Sure.
You have numbers that say how many units of students and stuff. How, can you tell me how many actual individual people or students participate? In other words, not by unit, but one person, one kid could be in 15 different things.
Yep.
So I would like to know how many actual kids are involved with the program?
We had 295 unique individual people from the Town League in our last playing season. And those 295 kids accounted for 587 participation spots in our different programs. So, you know, as an example, if you are in school and you play basketball for the high school and then you play soccer for the high school and you play baseball for the high school in three different seasons, you know, each of those seasons has their own setup, own coaches, own facilities and everything, which is why I think that's the more important number is how many times they participate, because you've gotta organize those individual programs each time they're offered. And I think that we did 41 unique programs last year. And a lot of those programs will have multiple age groups. So, you know, academy soccer's two different age groups, travel soccer's a lot of different age groups. Tennis is three different age groups as an example, but we count that as just one program. Academy soccer and travel soccer would be two programs, but hopefully that gives you a better picture.
Yes, that, that's helpful.
Any other questions like that? I'm gonna give you a brief little rundown for last year, cause it was not a normal one. Can tell you that much. So, I was, I was thinking about what has happened in the last, you know, since October of 2020 and it seems like four years ago, especially to us where everything changes in, in the school districts, I'm sure, changes at lightning speed. So our spring 2020 season was canceled. We didn't have any programming, that's typically a, our busiest season of the year. So around that time, we reduced staff. ORYA, you're looking at, is me, the only paid employee for ORYA and we still have our, of our interior board. Programming got back up once the state of New Hampshire outlined the amateur and youth sports COVID guidelines back in middle of June of 2020. So we've been doing forms of programming since then. And every season is a new challenge, especially the winter season. Last year, our basketball program is usually about 300 players. We had 77 last, last winter for a combination of factors. Unease of playing in an indoor sport, it provides close contact, lack of gym space for the type of program that we want in typical days that we usually offer those programs. So we got into this spring and this spring of 2021 started to feel like a normal year. Everybody was raring to go. I think it was our biggest, busiest single season in ORYA's history. We had just under 900 kids, uh, participants, playing, I think, seven different programs this last spring. And then summer camps and clinics were back online, a new record for summer participation as well. And then this fall, some programs that I was hoping to get set up, we weren't able to get set up. So I was a little disappointed there, but the programs that we do, academy soccer, travel soccer, tackle football, flag football and golf are all doing really well. Feedback's been great, everybody seems really happy. And kids are out there feeling like normal kids when they're out there for the most part. School is a huge part of feeling like a normal kid, but they still have some things in school. I've heard that it's not quite normal yet. When you're out playing outside, it's, it feels normal to them, which is great. So we're really happy to be offering those programs to make everybody feel normal, at least while they're there for that hour, hour and a half. So it, it has been challenging to keep up with everything as one person, doing, you know, programming that is so diverse and spans three communities and spans so many different sports and age groups, but we're making it happen.
Matt, can you speak a little bit to the relationship we have with the other two towns in Oyster River? Cause I know Durham suspended your funding, I, I don't know. Could you update us in terms of what your relationship is with Durham and Madbury at this particular time?
It depends on, are you asking about financial relationship or overall relationship?
Or however you'd like to respond to the question.
Overall, I work with, you know, Rachel Gazowski, who's a Durham Parson Ract Director, all the time. We're preparing for our Trotting Trees 5K fundraiser that we work on together. That's this Sunday, if anybody would like to run a trail race, one of the only trail races around. And speak with her all the time, so I feel like I have a great relationship with the town. Todd Selleck knows how to reach me, I know how to, I know how to reach him, we get along great. From a funding perspective, they have decided to eliminate funding for Oyster River. Families have noticed because we have moved to a, basically, we wanna showcase the subsidy that the town offers, ORYA, and the subsidy that Durham offers would reduce fees for Durham residents. The same with Lee. If you choose to subsidize, that's showcased directly in what they're paying for our recreational class programs. And so, you know, when they see that they're paying more for the same program because their community has chosen not to support youth sports, you know, they start to ask questions and wonder why and, you know, start to speak to the people in the town. So we've done work on the fields over at Woodridge, those are looking great. I feel like we've got a great relationship with the relatively new, I don't know the exact title, but the Steve Bullock of Durham, either Highway Department or, or the equivalent in that town. Madbury's fantastic to work with. We utilize Tibbetts as well as Demerit in that town. So that is three full-size multipurpose fields that could fit soccer, lacrosse, et cetera, two baseball fields at those locations. They have historically, at least the last two years, maybe three, have fully funded or extremely close funded the admin side operating expenses for the community members in their town and get along great with, with them and feel like I have a great relationship with the vast majority of people in Lee and get along great with everybody around here as well.
So is Durham still providing you space or not anymore, right? You moved over to Madbury, right?
Uh, in terms of office space?
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, it feels like five years ago that it was the last time we spoke, yeah. So I guess it was January of 2020 is when we moved into the former Madbury Library. They built a gorgeous new library just behind their town meeting complex. And we have moved into the little ranch that they used for their library for a number of years. After I've taken care of some mice that have been living there for what seems like decades, it's turned into a fantastic office. I mean, dedicated space, it's ours, I don't have to compete with, you know, the Zumba music or the ukulele lessons, which are great to listen to, but if I'm on a call or have a meeting, it can be challenging, which you used to have to do when we shared space in Durham. Dedicated storage space, I got to move a lot of our storage out of the chicken coop down the road that Jim Banks owns. I had to fight off squirrels and chipmunks and brush off the acorns from all of our equipment every time we got it out. And now I just have to fight with mice in the basement at the former library. So I can go downstairs and get things rather than drive over to the coop when we need them. So it's, it's been a fantastic move. I get to look out and see Demerit Park, which is right there, so it's a fantastic location for us. Dedicated meeting space for our volunteers and coordinators, it's great.
Thank you.
Yep.
All good. Everybody all set?
Usually I have more questions than this.
What comes from you coming here?
Yeah.
Know you. So, I'm looking over the programs, are the only programs that are subsidized? So which programs are subsidized by the town subsidy and which programs are just, you've gotta pay full freight no matter what?
So we determine those as recreational or travel. So a travel program is one that you are going to compete against other communities in official sanctioned leagues. And recreational class programs are ones that are all in-house. You play within amongst your community, against your community. We might have a scrimmage here and there to keep things light and fresh and fun, but it is generally in-house with people around here, against people around here. So travel soccer would be a travel base, travel hockey would be a travel base. Those would not be subsidized, those would just be paying a single participant fee. Flag football, golf, those would be ones that are subsidized. And this season, tackle football, travel soccer are both non-subsidized. Flag football, golf, academy soccer are.
So the ones that are flagged on the report here as subsidized by fundraising? Spring 2021 field hockey, fall field hockey, footsaw, which I had to Google to learn what that was.
It's how the rest of the world plays indoor soccer.
Yeah.
It's even a different ball.
So is that, that's a different type of subsidy than the, than the town subsidy?
No, that, that is exactly.
That's the town subsidy.
Yeah.
Okay, so all the rest of these are travel?
So I'm not sure which sheet you're looking at?
Oh, I got this big, I got a mega PDF of everybody and everything. Yeah.
Yeah, so anyone that has a different rate, well, I guess that is a little misleading. So for example, if you're looking on the first page and you're looking at spring travel soccer, it will say 165 to 185 for every residency.
I see.
That's a non-subsidized, cause they're all the same. The reason why there's a difference there is U9 and U10s paid 165 and U11s plus paid 185, no matter what town they're from.
Okay.
The very first one, 2020 fall academy soccer, see how every residency has a different range? Those are ones that are subsidized. So if you're a U6 soccer player from Durham, you pay $99 for 2020 fall soccer. If you were a Lee resident, you paid 81 for the same program.
Okay.
And Madbury paid 50.
And the ones that are flagged as subsidized by fundraising, that's just another sort of fundraising?
Those would be internal fundraising. So Springfield Hockey is subsidized by their summer field hockey program. So we have to be, some, some programs, we have to be super creative. When, when a community member says, why is your rec field hockey program twice as expensive as Brentwood's? It's because Brentwood's is run by their town rec program that is fully subsidized by their town. So the town pays for their rec director's salary, their office, their operating expenses, et cetera, et cetera. So all they pay is what sport expenses there are, you know? Are they getting a shirt? Are they getting a field hockey stick? Are they getting a ball? That's what it costs. Whatever, the town's also covering field maintenance and things like that. So since we're not fully subsidized, we've got those operating expenses. And then when we do get that subsidy, that's where that knocks down those rates. So for those that even with some of those subsidies are like still just out of whack with kind of what they could get at Newmarket or Barrington or Dover, even with an out-of-town rate, we try to be creative. How can we additionally bring these down? And so that's what that means.
Okay.
Okay. Pretty good?
Yep.
There was one thing I looked up this year, I think is interesting to communicate and I, I mentioned this to Todd Selleck over at Durham and he thought it was interesting as well. For the first time this year, when I was asking about numbers and putting my data together about participation from the last year, I don't have that specific sheet in front of me, but my numbers will be pretty close, I asked how many student athletes they had at town, oh, sorry, at Oyster River School District. So this wouldn't be like, when Girls on the Run, you know, this is, you officially sign up and it's a school team and you go and compete against other programs. So they gave me the total that they had for all teams over their last playing season, the same playing season that we had. And I got what that was and then I looked to see what we had. So obviously, when the towns give money to the Oyster River School District, a portion of that is going to fund school sports. Full-time athletic director of high school, full-time assistant athletic director of the high school, part-time athletic director of the middle school, all of the facilities are a big part of that, turf field, baseball fields, grass fields, gyms, et cetera. Just to kinda see the difference. And any guesses on how many student athletes they had the last year?
300.
Any other guesses?
Durham?
Didn't they not have a lot of programs?
The whole Oyster River School District.
The whole Oyster River School has.
Like they didn't have the option of, it's not cause they were in it, they were allowed to compete.
It's, yeah, so the same with us, it was the same season, the 2020 to 2031.
They were, they're dictated by the school board and you're not, so you could have, you could have kids playing when they couldn't because of following rules.
That's a good point. I'll ask for it from the previous year as well.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And see what I get. So put a star, asterisk next to this one. 300?
Nobody's brave enough to.
Five. 500?
Although 100 prices right rules.
Way low. So middle school, high school, they had, won't be exact, but about 960. So just under 1,000. And in that same time period, we had just over 2,000. So we had about 900 plus more than they did in that same time. Asterisk next to that playing season, I will definitely go back and see if I can get those still, those same numbers. I will definitely go back and see if I can get those still, those same numbers. And, you know, I thought about that for a little while and I was like, I was really proud of what ORYA was able to offer with the limited resources that we have, especially this year because it was me running around like a headless chicken trying to get everything done for everybody and our volunteers had to step up and then, boy, did they. So just really proud of what we were able to do, especially in this past year, compared to an organization that, you know, has all of the funding that they need.
So that means Tom wins. He's closest to the. I actually thought it was more, but I was being conservative. Price is Right rules.
Yeah.
So. All right, is everybody all set?
All set.
All right, thanks a lot, Matt. You sure? Anything else? We are good. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
What do we do?
Oh, we didn't do too bad.
Did we have any that didn't come? Any socially decent that didn't come?
They told me that.
Did they send for a class?
They did.
One of the things, just in terms of sitting here and listening to all these particular questions, one of the things that strikes me is looking at the agency and how much they affect the citizenry of Lee and how much they ask for. Because it's not consistent.
It looks like way low to me.
I think that's something that we can look at. Just because they ask for something doesn't mean we have to give it to them. Just because they ask for 1,000 doesn't mean we can't give them more.
Right.
So I think that's one of the things we should look at, all of us, in terms of looking at the amount of service they give the town versus how much they ask for. And I know many of these places get external funding other than us, of course.
But their funding can be greater and they actually have more power every time they get more dollars from the municipality because it does prove, so it makes grant writing easier, it makes everything easier. I just think that a lot of times they're afraid they won't get funded at all if they don't.
And that really helps the town, I mean, these agencies.
Well, they're taking so much pressure off of so many other areas and just helping the people. I mean, we're all here to support and represent people within our town. And that's exactly what they're doing.
The other thing to look at is look at the welfare director's budget, you know? Her salary and her expenses are pretty much constant in terms of, but look at how much we spent over the years in terms of welfare. We usually put like $20,000. We have not spent over that in a long time. And just recently, the number goes down. It's really weird, like all these particular places, you know, are servicing these people. We think, oh, pandemic, everybody's going to become full welfare, but it's really the number's gone down in terms of how much we spend.
There's been a lot more government.
Lee's not there, which I hope they could write.
The funding is coming from like the.
Right. The additional funding.
Which is going to go away and then that's not, you know, that's going to be interesting.
Close to something I think.
A lot to think about, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Another thing that brought up, which is outside of this, it's outside the purview of this committee, but it's inside the purview of this life board, so think about this. Why do we have such an incredibly low vacancy rate in New Hampshire? It's not because of state policy, it's because of town policies. Towns make it harder and harder for people to build affordable homes or to rent out your home. And every time that we think that we're keeping our neighborhoods very nice, keeping out those sorts of elements and not allowing people next to us to rent out to someone who's a bit of an unsungary character, we make it harder and harder for people who are at the bottom of the social ladder to climb up. And so it's something that can't be solved through federal or state policy because zoning is handled at the local level. And if we don't make room for people who are starting out life or have gone through a horrible divorce because of someone being abusive, whatever the situation might be, to land in a place that they can afford because God forbid anything ever happened to the value of our own homes. You know, it really is a thing that we have to keep in mind and it starts at the planning level in the town.
It's the quality of your community as well. So when you think about it, we hear a lot of times, there's no one that can volunteer. Well, people that are starting out, they're maybe in their 20s and they just want to, you know, live in an apartment or live somewhere nearby, they'd be here and they'd be willing to volunteer, but they can't get a house. We have fired, people working in the fire department that it would be so much faster if they lived here, but they can't find a place to live. So I think there's a lot of areas that I think we forget when we're making those choices. It also changes the, I think about the town and you grow when you become a much more enjoyable place to live when you have people.
That diversity makes for a much more interesting and inclusive.
Rich life, yeah.
We need some more apartments to be able to rent here. Sorry. We need more apartments or housing or affordable housing.
Or to reconsider some of the ways that we allow residents to have a rental within their own home, for example, there's lots of restrictions on that. And that's a way that somebody can be, I mean, if anything, I would think, what would I rather have? Something on the edge of town that's like section eight housing and we're just going to kind of push that over there? Or, you know, somebody needs a place to live, if they're in someone's home, harder for them to foster an unhealthy lifestyle because someone's there who is going to know, you know, is this person having an issue or not? And then they're more integrated into the community.
All good, please.
I will turn it back over to you, Chairman Brown.
Well, this is going to be quick. Meeting adjourned.